Stand by, 15 seconds of showtime. Welcome, everyone, to the City of Marquette. Meeting agenda, Monday, October 28, 2013. Will you please join us in pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Kimbenzi?
Here.
Commissioner Coyne?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Neme?
Here.
Mayor DePinto?
Here. City Clerk, let the record show all seven Commissioners present. Commissioners, any note of agenda change? It's Commissioner Coyne.
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to add an agenda item, probably under Old Business, canceling the public hearing for Wednesday regarding the truck ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll put that under Old Business at the end of 12... Unfinished Business? Under New Business? Unfinished Business? That'd be 12-903? Thank you. Is there any other changes to the agenda?
Commissioner Neme?
Your Honor, on the bill's payable and the consent agenda, we do have a checked Commissioner Kimbenzi, so we will have to draw that off the bill's payable to be approved separately by the Commissioner so she can abstain.
Correct. Thank you.
Yes. That's correct. We want to remove item number 12-884, which is the lease with Superior Hockey LLC. Their financing still isn't available yet because the federal government shut down, so...
Thank you.
That requires a motion and a support and a vote.
A motion.
Is there a second? Commissioner Kimbenzi? There's a motion by Commissioner Neme, second by Commissioner Kimbenzi. Anything further, Commissioner Neme?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Commissioner Kimbenzi?
Nothing.
Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've had to recuse myself from a vote dealing with them before, so I'm also recused from this. It would pass six to zero with one abstention.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes six to zero. City Clerk, will the record show that Commissioner Kimbenzi, Commissioner Schneider had abstained from this? Thank you. And with that, we'll go to announcements. I got some announcements here that I can...
Do you want to approve the agenda as amended?
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
I would move the agenda to be approved as amended.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan and a second by Commissioner Coyne. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Anything further, Commissioner Coyne? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll go to announcements. These are current openings on volunteer committees and boards. Agent Service Advisory Committee, one opening, that's a housing representative. Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, three openings. Harbor Advisory Committee, one opening. Labor Local Officers Compensation Commission, two openings. Market-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, one opening. Parks and Rec Recreation Advisory Board, two openings. Peter White Public Library Board, one opening. Planning Commission, one opening. Police-Fire Pension Board, one opening. Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan Ad Hoc Committee, one alternate opening. Sister City Advisory Committee, five openings. And Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, three openings. Thank you. With that, we'll go to presentation, and that'll be 12-684, Local Officers Compensation Commission by Chairman Jack LaSalle. Jack, thank you. Up there, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Commission and staff. Per the charter, we meet on odd years to set the compensation for the Marquette City Commission and the board members of the Board of Water and Light here in Marquette. And while we normally have a complement of seven people who make up the Local Officers Compensation Committee, we're currently two members short. But for this meeting nonetheless, we had a majority of the remaining members of the Compensation Committee present and in attendance on our meeting on August 28. We spent the time in the meeting reviewing some comparable communities in an effort to keep up with the trend and direction of compensation for members of city councils and city commissions in Michigan, as well as the Board of Water and Light. I understand that you have our report and our recommendations before you, and if you would like, I will quickly summarize what those are and accept whatever questions you have. By unanimous vote, the group decided the following for our elected official salaries: City Commission, Mayor, Board of Light and Power, and Board of Light and Power Chair. We proposed, and propose to you, that the City Commissioners be paid $150 per meeting, capped at $7,500 per year. We propose further that the Board of Light and Power be paid $100 per meeting, capped at $4,000 per year. We propose that the Mayor's additional compensation remain at $2,500 a year. And that the Board of Light and Power's Chair additional compensation be retained at $125 per quarter. So with that, if you have questions about our recommendation, I am here to try and fuel those inquiries.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Chairman Jack LaSalle? Commissioner Schneider?
This is more of a comment to public rather than a question for you, Mr. LaSalle. I had approached the Officers Compensation Committee, as well as one other Commissioner, about the compensation for City Commissioners and requested you guys to review this. And I just wanted to be able to make it public. Previously, Commissioners were at $90 a meeting, and I had requested that they review this. And, one, I felt comfortable with it because I will no longer be on the commission come a few weeks from now. But also, I felt that at 35 and trying to work, a number of my peers, Commissioner Kimbenzi and a number of people with regular full-time jobs and children, have a really hard time volunteering their time to be able to serve on a commission as such. And I wanted there to be some compensation for whether it be childcare or missed time at work or something like that. And so I think that was part of the impetus, was in going to the Officers Compensation Committee and asking them for what they thought was something fair that would help offset some of those so that we can keep a wider range of age groups, demographics, and people who are actually, who are also working, as well as those who are retired, on the commission and involved. So I just wanted to give a little bit of that background, and I appreciate you coming in tonight to give the presentation.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider? Commissioner Kimbenzi?
Just one question. It came up to us, and Commissioner Coyne and I were on the Charter Commission as far as what we wrote and was voted in on the Charter and what was passed. Are we compliant with that? I know we had our city attorney kind of looking at that, too.
Question to me or to Mr. LaSalle?
Kind of both of you. Is it resolved, I guess? Is that...
It's resolved, in my mind.
The Charter has a requirement, and I don't think, you know, the Charter Commission
went two different directions, but we can only do one thing, and I've resolved that.
Okay.
And so that's, you know, that's all I can tell you. It's my memo that you've seen.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Kimbenzi? Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I would agree with Commissioner Schneider's comments. I think it's very important to have reimbursement as part of this. And today, I kept track of the hours that I have spent today and because people think, "Well, that's an awful lot for just sitting here for three or four hours." But as of this moment, I have spent seven hours doing City Commission work today, and I probably have three more left. So that's 10 hours and 10 minutes if we get out at 10 o'clock, if I stop talking so we can get out at 10 o'clock. But, I mean, this is a lot of work. Seven hours, and it's, you know, I started at 9:00, and it's now 7:00. I've been working at this constantly, in meetings, talking, preparing. So I think people need to know that it's not just, "Okay, I think I'll drop by City Hall and be a City Commissioner." It's a lot of work. And, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Any other Commissioner at this time? Seeing none, I agree. Actually, you don't go by the hours, you're 24/7, because many times when I'm in the grocery stores or wherever, and it could be 10 o'clock at night, somebody wants to address the issues, and I'll say, "Step in my office here," and it might be near the, you know, where the fruits and all that is, or it might be over where the coal liquids are. But anyways, people want to address, when they see us, issues that they want to hear why we do this or why we do that. And so, a lot of times, when we can divulge the extra information we have on these items, we'll explain it the best we can. And even though we do, that doesn't always mean they're happy with the answer. But, you know, that's one of the things that goes with the territory. But I've always felt like I'm available 24/7 to anybody that needed to call. And sometimes I'd even, when people would complain about loud parties at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, I would ask them, "Would you please call the Mayor Pro Tem?" You know? And he can email me the next day. So, you know, we, at least, we kept the communication open. And with that, Jack, I want to thank you and your board very much for doing what you do. It's not easy, so, thank you again. And with that, we'll move to 12-896, Marquette Area Mobility Transit Study by Vice President and Director Roger Miller of Smart Growth America. Roger? Did you want Mrs. Coyne up there at all with you, or... No?
Mr. Mayor, perhaps if there are some questions that go that way, I'll let her rest easy during the presentation. Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, citizens, my name is Roger Miller. I'm the Vice President with Smart Growth America. I'm here tonight to deliver our final report on some work that we've been doing in your community over the last year. What I wanted to do tonight was talk a little bit about smart growth and thriving local economies. This is my wife in our backyard, so I understand the weather that you guys experience, although I'll say in Montana, it's a dry cold. We'll talk a little bit about technical assistance we've been doing in Michigan and then the mobility management strategies that we came up with with your community. I'm a Vice President at Smart Growth America, so I would be remiss if I didn't define smart growth for you. Smart growth to us means building urban, suburban, and rural communities with housing and transportation choices near job shopping and schools. And these strategies are designed to support thriving local economies and protect the environment. I'm a civil engineer and a planner. I've worked in public works. I've worked in community development. I've worked in the private sector over the last 35 years. Here I am at your ski hill earlier today. But I work in the smart growth arena, smart growth or sustainability or resiliency, whatever you want to call it. And I hear a lot about smart growth as I go around the country. I hear that it's ugly. No one would want to visit a place like the Italian Riviera, smart growth area. We have no history with it here in North America. No one would want to live there. This is Aspen, Colorado, little smart growth community in the mountains. It just doesn't work here like the Pearl District in Portland, Oregon, where I was the, had the privilege of being the project manager. So shut up and drive. Our public rights of way are the domain of the automobile. They always have been, and they always will be. And I know from my travels around and my visit to your community that your roads were here before the car, and they aren't just there for the car. But what's important for us to realize is the way we design and build our communities has enormous consequences. So what we like to talk about are three important factors that you need to be aware of as you talk about the future of your community. And as members of the Commission, as the Mayor, as City Staff, you have a responsibility to your constituents, and your constituents have a responsibility to themselves, to their children, and to their children's children to, you know, worry, care, be concerned about the future of the community. The market's changing, especially for housing. The recipe for economic growth is changing, and we found that we can no longer afford to use tax money to subsidize inefficiency. So talking about the changing market, your community is changing, and preferences and the market are following those changes. Two strong demographic changes that we're seeing, the rise of the millennial generation and the aging of the baby boomers. Here's a graphic showing the population, the greatest generation. They're on the left moving to the right with the baby boomers, Generation X, and now the millennials. You'll notice that there are more millennials now than there are boomers, and boy, are they going to be mad when they begin to take over and see what's been going on. But this demographic change, the aging of the boomers and the rise of this millennial generation, is really affecting what's happening in our built environments and why we're very involved in mobility management, the things that I'll be talking about a little bit later. When you look at households without children, how many people in the room remember Ozzy and Harriet? Okay? I used to have a slide of Ozzy and Harriet in the show, but nobody remembered who they were. And so I point out, if you don't know who they are, why do we keep designing our community for them? Back in 1960, roughly half of American households had children in them. Today, because we're living longer, because we're making different lifestyle choices, the number of households with children in them is less than a third of the total. And there are actually more people living alone than living in homes with children in the house. And that's because we're living, like I said, my daughter was born when I was 40, so I was able to extend my youth, my childhood, an additional 20 years. That was time that I was in a house without children, and hopefully, when she graduates from college, she won't come back and live with me, and I'll have some more time. So what's happening is there are more households without children, which means the market is changing, and the building community is responding to that change. We have a need for attached housing that we don't have in place today. We have a need for small lot homes, homes on lots smaller than 7,000 feet. We need tens of millions of those in the United States, but there's actually a surplus. There are more large lot, single-family homes in America today than we need going into the future, and that's homes over 7,000 square feet. So when you think about your planning and how you organize your community, how will you and the rest of Michigan meet the needs of millennials and aging boomers in order to improve your competitiveness? That's one thing to think about. Prosperity is another thing that's important to a lot of people. Quality of life starts with a paycheck. The nature of the economy is changing, and the role of communities and economic growth is changing as well. We used to think of the city as a machine. It was linear. We were focused on making and moving things and mass production, functional segregation, all the things about business. We organized our towns around the businesses that were there. And what's happening now is the city is becoming a network. We are more involved with information and technology and the like, and there's a blurring of lines between the private sector and the institutional sector and the public sector. And you notice when the government shut down, a lot of private sector employees got laid off. There's a lot of different things that are happening. The rise of the millennials and the globalization of our economy are driving that. One of the things we're finding, when my generation got out of school, we went to where the jobs were. You know, they had a job fair at school, and you went and you applied, and you went through your interviews and stuff, and you got a couple of job offers with any luck, and you went to where the best job was. What's happening today is the millennial generation is graduating from college, and they're choosing where they want to live. And they're moving there, and then they're looking for work. Now, I spent a good part of my career in Portland, Oregon. When I started in Portland in 1982, we had 20% unemployment and outmigration. More people were leaving than were coming. Today, in the last recession, they had 20% unemployment. People kept coming to Portland. And one of the reasons our employment numbers were high were because millennials were moving there because that's where they wanted to be. So how people want to work is changing, where they want to work is changing. The labor market, office space is moving from that Dilbert-like cubicle farm to more inviting environments. And people are moving from the suburban office park environment into places like your downtown. You have an amazing stock of buildings where people can live and be in close proximity to their partners in this networked economy that we have today. So across the country, corporations are responding to employee preferences. They're moving to the talent, and they're choosing to relocate. Zappos in Las Vegas or Hillshire in Chicago are moving back into downtown from the suburban locations. So how can you take advantage of the changing nature of the economy? If these people can choose to live anywhere they want, why would they want to live in your city? That's a huge thing. And then finally, fiscal health, the health of your local government. How communities develop affects your costs and your revenues. Municipal budgets are feeling the pressure. One of the reasons that we're out working with people is they need help. The business as usual is not working anymore. State and federal funds are going away. Costs are escalating. Tax bases are shrinking. A lot of what you do, a lot of the money you spend, is on infrastructure and services. The costs of infrastructure are something that's quite often borne by the development community, but the costs of operations and maintenance fall to the taxpayer. So when it comes to infrastructure costs, what we found is compact development is the best deal. The low-density suburban development rarely pays for itself, and it makes sense to reuse the infrastructure you have. Here's a chart of development costs in a western state. I don't have one from Michigan, I'm sorry. But when you look at fringe development and suburban development, it's a lot more expensive in terms of the infrastructure for a single-family house as compared to urban infill on the right-hand side. And I'm sure your Public Works people have found this in Marquette. Compact development provides you efficiencies and services as well. Police and fire departments have less area to cover. There are fewer miles to cover for snow removal, for trash pickup, for things like that. This is a slide from Bozeman, Montana, some work we did there that's directly related to the transit discussion we'll be having in a few minutes. They developed a fixed route bus service, buses that go around on routes just like Marktran does. It costs them about $2.25 a ride or to move those passengers around in comparable communities in Helena and Butte, it's a little bit more. But the demand-responsive service, the dial-a-ride service for seniors and the disabled is costing $15 to $25 an hour. When you think about the aging of your population, if you have a fixed route service and you have the infrastructure in place that people can get to that service and ride that $2.25 bus, you're going to reduce the demand for the $15 to $25 an hour ride. When you think about, the AARP says that the average American male is going to outlive his ability to drive by seven years. The average American woman by 11. How do we maintain our independence and our dignity when we hang up the car keys for the last time? And how will you, as people responsible for the public purse, support a transit system that provides the services these folks are looking for? And the way you build your environment is going to determine whether or not people are going to be able to ride an inexpensive ride or a very expensive ride. Development affects your revenue, too. This is another slide. This is from that same study, looking at the revenue per acre from fringe development and suburban development, urban infill development. It's, you know, when you think about it, you've probably experienced the same thing here in Marquette. Urban infill development is mostly building. Development out on the fringe is mostly land. You get more tax revenue off of structures than you do off of land. And these are the two slides we love to share with our finance community. If you're talking to your city finance director, here's revenue, here's cost. Here's revenue, here's cost. Again, there's the revenue for urban infill. There's the, what kind of development are your financial guys, the bean counters, going to want to see in your town? So can Michigan continue to subsidize inefficiencies of development patterns without reaping the potential award? That's the why about why we do what we do around the country, was we're looking at changing demographics and how we respond all over America, changing economy and changing the cost of government. So what have we been doing in Michigan? We came in at the invitation of the Michigan Department of Transportation and MISTDA, the State Housing Development Authority, to provide technical assistance to Michigan communities. There are six communities in Michigan that are working with MISTDA, some with HUD grant money, some with state-funded monies, looking at regional planning and looking at implementing plans all around the state, here in Marquette, in Traverse City, in Grand Rapids, in Lansing, in Ann Arbor, and also down in Detroit with SEMCOG. And we came in and worked in each of those communities. In some of the communities, we talked about mobility management. We discussed mobility management here in your community, and we discussed it in Traverse City. And then we looked at transportation demand management in the other communities around the state and developed some really interesting stuff in each of the communities we work with. What we heard around the state was there are some cross-cutting lessons, some things that apply everywhere. We need to take down barriers, rethink traditional processes, enable cooperation between cities and counties and other players. We need to build up partnerships. We need to think long-term. These steps that we take, they may be small steps in the course of a year or a term of office or whatever, but, you know, over time, they make a difference. We need to remain flexible. One of the things that I love hearing about is we need to fail fast. If we're going to fail, fail fast, get it out of the way and get on to the next thing. Then we need to do it. You know, even the small steps we take matter. So what we worked on in Marquette and what we learned here and what we're recommending to you and your peers at the county and at the Marktran Board in terms of mobility management came from a very diverse group of stakeholders. One of the things I learned very early on in my career is if you don't do stuff with people, they assume you're doing it to them. So we came in right off the bat and said, "The first thing we want to do is meet with folks and find out what works for them." So there's our steering committee that we organized. All these folks were invited. Attendance, sometimes it was better than other times. We were here, Dave, was it in June? Beautiful sunny day, couldn't get anybody to show up. But February, we had a full room. Anyway, they were all there. We did a process that starts with presenting the state of the practice. We looked at and we presented to the community the state of the practice for mobility management, which is, you know, moving people. We assessed current local practices. We identified some key structures to build on. We gave the steering committee multiple strategies. Here's the menu. What would you like to see? What would you like us to develop further? What do you think isn't particularly appropriate for your community? And from that, we came back with a detailed strategic management approach and action plan for the city. What we heard in terms of objectives for this plan, improve the integration of public transit into Marquette City Core and to support the downtown development efforts. There was a lot of interest from your downtown development community, downtown businesses, in taking advantage of the service that's provided and making that link an even better one. Coordinate service between providers. You've got public and private service providers and the coordination. You've got public and private service providers and coordinating that service is, is important. We can't afford to be inefficient anymore. Serve the seasonal tourist needs as well as your local residents. There's a lot of people that come to Marquette that, that don't know a bus service exists. Integrate human service needs with other community goals. Increase the focus on public transit and community planning and decision-making. You've got this tool, you're spending money on it, you ought to integrate it into the other things that you do. And improve the marketing of the service because you can have the best service in the world, but if nobody knows about it, it's not doing you any good. So what we came up with was a fairly modest and I, I think achievable strategy for action. First, to complete what the federal government calls a human service coordination plan. This is an inventory of, of services and needs in the community and a coordination of that effort across all of the stakeholders that are involved. The second was to improve marketing, information communication and coordination of transit service. Market what you have and build the demand. Build the demand for increased service. And then last but not least is optimize and energize the existing service on Third Street before launching new service. The, what originally brought us here was the work that you're doing in your Third Street corridor. And we were looking at Third Street, you know, from the get-go. And one of the ideas was, boy, wouldn't it be great to have a regular bus route on Third Street? And Marktran pointed out, by golly, we do have a regular bus route on Third Street. So investigating that new Third Street route is important, but supporting what's there and getting the word out about what's there and linking it to the downtown revitalization that you're talking about is, is, is what's really important. So the human service coordination plan, again, it's an inventory of providers and services. You hold a coordination meeting to reach consensus, you collect and document additional information. Why do this? Because if you have this plan, we, we learned this from our colleagues at the Michigan DOT, if you have this plan, you're eligible for money that you're not eligible for otherwise. And we ought to make yourself, make sure you're eligible for as much money as, as you can bring to the community. And one of the things about doing the work that we did is we understand that the report that you have in your hands is, what, about 80% of the way there towards a human services coordination plan. So with a little bit of additional effort on the part of Marktran and the city and the county, we can get that service, that service coordination plan adopted and make the community eligible for some additional federal money for transit. Improving marketing, information, communication and coordination of transit service. You've got really good service for a community your size. The marketing plan and the branding is being worked on. Getting transit information everywhere so that when you go to the city's website or the university's website or the county's website or that, you can see where transit service is available. Putting information where visitors can find it. I have, have had the opportunity to stay in a couple of your hotels. And again, I wouldn't know, you know, you ask the people at the front desk, they don't know. You come into the airport, the Marktran serves the airport, hard to figure that out. Not surprising that it's hard to figure that out because the car rental companies generate a lot of revenue. But getting information where visitors can find it. When people come in on the summer, when they fly in or they come in on a boat, how do they get around your community? Making that information available is important. Having trip planning and transit service guides and real-time information, having all of that stuff available. There are a lot of people that rely, I rely on it a lot, my smartphone, my kids rely, they're the ones that program it for me. But when you come to town, one of the first things I do after I'm looking for a restaurant, so I look to how to get around. And Google Maps will have, how do you get there by driving or how do you get there by walking or how do you get there by transit? If you pull up Google Maps in your community, there is no transit service. And getting that information into a con, a, a construct that can be used by Google Maps is an important part of, of making the service available, making it more efficient, getting the most bang out of your buck. And this was not news to Marktran. They're, they've been working on this. What we hope we can do with this report is, is organize that and get some more people and some more impetus in the community behind making those things happen. And last but not least is the Third Street Transit Corridor. There's, there's a great opportunity, as, as you know, for some synergies, some symbiotic relationships between the university and the downtown. You're set up nicely for it. The, the business community is interested in it. We drew this red line on the map of what would be a really great circulator that would go back and forth between the downtown and the university and the hospital along the Third Street corridor. It was pointed out in the process that a lot of that already exists with Marktran routes that are in place today. We need to look at what the needs are in further detail, you know, in relation to the recently completed parking study and the other funding options that might be out there. We need to design the new services of partnership and you need to flexibly integrate it into the existing system. And you know, at, at this point, the justification for this service doesn't really exist. The concept that is there, it's a great idea, but what we said, back to the first and second alternatives that we, recommendations that we made, you need to build the demand to justify making the, making the investment. And getting students on the bus, getting your citizens on the bus, having people move up and down that Third Street corridor is going to create the demand for, and the critical mass that's needed to make a route like that successful. So having a target like this map to shoot for is a long-term vision. Like we said, be flexible, take the, take the immediate steps that are achievable and market the heck out of what you've got there now. Fill the buses up to the point where they, they've got to put that bus, that route in place. Those are the kinds of things that, that we recommended you do going forward. So those are our three simple recommendations for your community. One of the things I want to make sure that you know is that we, we work in communities all over the country and one of the things that we're doing is taking Michigan's story and, and Marquette's story elsewhere. You know, you, you've got a, a, a really nice little system going. There's some things you could do to make it better and we've been happy to be a part of that. All of our work, as I said before, was done with the steering committee. All of the work is available. It's on the city planning website. It's on our website. And with that, I'm done, Mr. Mayor. Members of the commission would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any question? Commissioner Kambenzi.
I have a question, actually two questions. One, who takes ownership of those master sort of transportation guides? Meaning, does the city publish it? Do, does the county publish it? Does Martran kind of pull everyone together and... Because I feel, I feel like that's certainly a problem, especially with our arts community. Everyone's doing their own thing, but there's no master calendar, there's no master guide for people to go to. And kind of sounds like that might be what, at least for our tourists when they come into town or just people that might find themselves transitioning from being able to drive to not... How, who, who steers that?
Mayor, Commissioner. The, you know, Marktran as the, as the transit service provider certainly has the, the leadership role in that, but it's, it's one thing to provide the service, it's another thing to look at the opportunities to leverage that service. And I think in, in that case, the city, the county, the business community, the university, the hospital, everybody has a stake in it. The human services planning that we talked about, part of that is coordination and part of that coordination and implementing that plan is ongoing coordination. But the human services planning tends to look at your transit-dependent population, which is, is an important part of what transit does. But we're transitioning as a country from a place where transit is a social service we provide for people who have no other choice to transit being a viable alternative for all of us. And I think there are people in your business community that get that, that want to see that happen. A, a part of it is, you know, letting that, that business energy go. You know, one of the things we, we talked in, down in Detroit about putting together an app for people to get around during all of the freeway construction that's proposed down there. And it was pointed out that by the time government figures out that app, there'll be three or four entrepreneurs out there that have designed and developed and implemented something better already. So I, I think part of it is engaging the, the business community and the private sector, working in partnership. You appoint members to the Marktran board, the county appoints members to the Marktran board, making sure that your interests are known as those appointments are being made, meeting regularly on these issues. And, and again, money's being spent. Federal money is being spent, state money is being spent, local money is being spent. It's incumbent on everyone to leverage that to the extent that they can.
Okay. The other question I had is zoning ordinances. Did that, does that come into play or is that something that's...
That's where I got all my gray hair.
You did.
I've been a, I've, I've redone three zoning ordinances before, but zoning in relation to transit? There are some things you can do with, with transit and walking and biking in your zoning ordinance to accrue benefit to the community for sure. What we're, what we're showing is that people want that infill opportunity, they want that choice. People want to live in a tract, you know, a, a ranch house in the suburbs, too, and that's just fine. But you know, how do you make it easy to do what people see we need more of? One way you do that is you reduce the cost. And a big part of development cost is parking. You can change your zoning ordinance to provide incentives for downtown infill and redevelopment by making it easier to park those buildings, by giving, you know, bonuses for mixed use so that if I've got businesses that are parking and I've got residents that are parking in the same project, I don't have them have two sets of parking. I coordinate them and maybe there's less parking needed than if they were two separate projects physically apart from one another. I give developers a, you know, ease on the parking requirements when they're near a transit route, ease on the parking requirements when they're near a bicycle route, you know, density bonuses for that kind of thing. You, you can look at your ordinance to see if there are any barriers in the way of things happening. You can provide incentives through your ordinance. And there are some times when you have to regulate through your ordinance, too, to get the things that you want. But there are a lot of ways that zoning and transit work together and we'd be happy to work with your staff on implementing some of those if it's something of interest to you.
One comment I have is I spent some time on the planning commission and of all the big houses in town, a lot of them have big garages. And it's come up various times, why don't we open up the second floor of the garages for studio apartments to get more density? And it seems to be this kind of rub between not wanting neighborhoods to become too dense and then wanting that additional walkability and bikability. So it's, it's, it's interesting.
That can be an issue. It was a huge issue in Missoula where I was the planning director, the, the tension between wanting a place for us and our, our children and our parents to live and not wanting our neighbor to have their child or their parent live in that unit above the garage because that's not who's going to be. It's going to be some rowdy, you know, one of them is going to live there. What the, the folks in Salt Lake City, it's a radical community out in Utah, but Salt Lake City, the, the guy that was the leader of the Envision Utah Project said, the people we're zoning out of our neighborhoods are our children. And so, you know, you need, you need to think about that. You also need to think about where, what are the communities, the parts of your community that are stable and don't need your attention? And what are the parts of your community that are dynamic, that are in a state of change where you can make these kinds of things happen? And where people are looking for change, you know, make it a, a positive thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Kambenzi. Commissioner Schneider.
I want to echo on Commissioner Kambenzi's comments, questions and comments. I thought they were all really well-placed. And Roger, I really want to thank you for the work that you've done, not just here but elsewhere. I think that, that where we're going as a nation and how we deal with it with our infrastructure is exceedingly important and generally not necessarily being paid attention to. So I understand that the climate that you're working in, it probably can be pretty difficult to, to pitch some of the ideas that you have. And I just want to thank you for the work that you've done both here and elsewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none, I want to thank you very much for your presentation. Excellent. And I think that we're going to be probably going on some of the comments that you did. And I know you got the director of the Market Trans Authority here and one of her board members, Pete LaRue. So it'd be interesting for them to do with the information that you presented.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a privilege. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to Proclamations 12-685, November as National Homeless Month. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas countless Americans face homelessness, homelessness every day, including youth, adults and families. And whereas the downturn in the national economy and the increase in home foreclosures has significantly increased homelessness over the past three years. And whereas each year, the estimated number of homeless people greatly exceeds the number of emergency shelters and transitional housing spaces across the country. And whereas many people in homeless situations are forced to live with relatives and friends in crowded temporary arrangements, others may stay in temporary shelters, tents, motels or other places. And whereas the ensuing winter weather poses extreme hardship for unsheltered and inadequately housed people in our community. And whereas the city of Marquette supports all homeless persons trying to make a difference in their lives through employment, homeless self-help, empowerment and other positive efforts. And whereas the residents of Marquette recognize the need to work together to saw homelessness and hunger in our community. Now therefore, I, Johnny DePietro, Mayor of the City of Marquette, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2013 as National Homeless Month in the City of Marquette, dated this 28th day of October 2013.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have one more proclamation, 12-895, World Diabetes Day. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas an estimated 24,000 Upper Peninsula residents have diabetes, a serious disease that has no cure. And whereas the cost of diabetes in Michigan was $8 billion in 2011. And whereas another 83,000 Upper Peninsula residents have pre-diabetes, a condition that puts them at high risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas of half the people with diabetes don't know that they have the disease. And whereas many people with diabetes lack access to the care, treatment and education needed to manage the disease and prevent its seriousness and costly complications, including heart disease, stroke, kidney failure, blindness and lower limb amputation. And whereas an increase in community awareness of risk factors and symptoms related to diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will get the attention they need before developing their di, disease and its devastating complications. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly has designated the current World Diabetes Day, November 14th, as United Nations Day, to be observed every year beginning in 2007. And whereas the United Nations encourages supporters of the United Nations Resolution on Diabetes to fight the worldwide epidemic by helping to ensure that individuals with diabetes have access to care, treatment and education. Now therefore, I, Johnny DePietro, Mayor of the City of Marquette, do hereby proclaim November 14th, 2013 as World Diabetes Day in support of the United Nations Resolution. I encourage all local residents in Marquette to help fight this disease and its life-threatening complications by increasing awareness of the risk factors for treatment to those suffering from diabetes, dated this 20th day of October 2013.
Thank you, City Clerk. And with that, I'd like to have Dr. Anne Constance meet me up after the lecture. Get in the picture here. And I know you want to say a few things before you call your next guest up here. So would you like to say something?
I would. So we actually have Jordan David with us today, too. She's from the Alpha Gamma Delta Sorority and their mission is to raise money for diabetes research and education. And I'm with the Diabetes Outreach Network and it's nice that I was promoted to a doctor today. Thanks.
As a mayor, I can't do that.
Perfect, perfect. Do I get a pay raise, too?
You, I promise you, a pay raise.
So it's really our pleasure to pin Commissioner Kambenzi in recognition of World Diabetes Day and actually it's Diabetes Awareness Month in November, too. We've got a circle that symbolizes World Diabetes Day and across some cultures, this is a symbol of health and life. And the circle also sim, symbolizes unity, coming together to detect, prevent and treat diabetes. And during November, it's my hope that everyone who lives with diabetes will take one action to improve how they manage their, their condition. And everyone that is at risk for developing diabetes, anyone that's overweight, which is most of us, not getting enough exercise, have a family history, to take one action to strive to take off... have a family history, to take one action to strive to take off a little weight and to put a little more activity into your life. And also know that about 5% to 10% of the people that live with diabetes here in the Upper Peninsula did nothing to cause their diabetes, it's not linked to their lifestyle, and they could do nothing to prevent it. It just happens, and they have to take insulin for their entire life. So with that, I'd like to invite Commissioner Kambenzi to accept our pin.
Also, would you like to invite your...
Yes, and Jordan, if you could come up here too.
Did you want to explain what's going on during the pinning of this? Or... Did you want to finish the rest of the story?
Do you want to say anything?
Well, she'll get her chance. I just want you to explain again a little bit to, for the public that were out in TV land that didn't hear the whole story about you pinning Commissioner Sarah Kambenzi.
Yes, definitely. Wearing that pin throughout the month of November, we hope will bring awareness to people living with diabetes and helping to increase awareness of those that are at risk for developing diabetes, and Sarah's lived with diabetes for many years, so we're really pleased that she's willing to be public about it and be the face of one of those many people who live with diabetes, and she has type 1, so there's nothing she could do. It wasn't because she was eating too much sugar, that has nothing to do with anybody's development of diabetes, believe it or not, and it just happened, and now she lives with insulin on a daily basis so that she can be here serving our community and doing all the other things that she does, just like you and I do every day, but she has to do extra things.
Thank you. Also, I know you wanted to come up and say something, so...
Do you want to say something about the sorority?
Sure, yeah.
Sure, that's excellent.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jordan David. I am a member of Alpha Gamma Delta on Northern Michigan University's campus. Our philanthropy through Alpha Gamma Delta is for diabetes awareness and support, and we actually were able to donate over $2,000 last year to that foundation. This month, we're actually doing a pancake breakfast, and all proceeds will go to that foundation as well, so if any of you are free on November 2nd, can come to that, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Also, Commissioner Sarah Kambenzi would like to say something also. Commissioner Kambenzi?
Thank you. When Ann approached me about this, I thought it was a great opportunity. Most people see me on TV, but they would never guess or never know that I am a diabetic, and this year is my 26th year, so doing great, and I think the biggest thing is just creating the awareness, but also just for anyone who is a diabetic, being open about it. I know my peers up here will hear my insulin pump going off, beeping, you know, sometimes I'll just need to take a break, eat something, but just letting everyone know what's going on, bringing awareness out, and then certainly living a healthy life. I hope I am an inspiration to a lot of people because 26 years, I'm doing pretty good, so I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, everyone, and we appreciate it. In November, we'll be recognized as Diabetes Month. Thank you at all.
You're welcome.
And with that, I suppose I could have stayed up there. I wanted to welcome a new member to the committee, Brett Baronic. He's coming on to the Planning Commission. Brett, could you meet me up there, please? Welcome, Brett.
Thank you.
Brett had volunteered to serve on the city's Planning Commission, and we're very excited to have him come onboard. We wanted to present him with the city pin to start off his... I know he's anxious to get to the meetings, and explain to us how you got interested in wanting to come on to the City Planning Commission.
Well, first I should say, after hearing Commissioner Coines' testament on how much time he spent today, maybe I'm second guessing this a little bit, but, no, actually, what Roger said earlier really hit home. My wife and I lived in Chicago for a handful of years. I'm actually a Uper, and she's from the northern lower, but we came back to Marquette because we wanted to, not because we had to. Gave up good jobs in Chicago and have been able to be very successful in Marquette, and I know we both have friends that would love to get back to Michigan if they could just find a job or do as well as they could elsewhere, so for us, it's worked out, and hoping to make Marquette a place where it can work out for other people as well.
And with that, we all thank you very much for coming aboard. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in item being moved up on agenda. Please state your name and physical address as you come up to this lectern here and face the city commission. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mike Beauchamp, 328 Harrison Street. Just came up here to make a few comments on the proposed rate increase for the electric rates here in Marquette. First of all, I'd like to say that I've always been very happy that Marquette owns their own power plant. It gives us control over the prices or over the rates, and for many, many years, I do believe there have not been any increases. My wife informed me that in the next three years, we're going to have an 8.5 increase every year, and that's a lot. That did catch my attention. It's my understanding that there's some cash flow problems that need to be taken care of, and I think it's probably important that you all explain that to the public so they're not all shocked by the increase. And I would hope that since this is going to be a sequential increase, 8.5 every year for three years, that if you do find that you're swimming in money, that perhaps you might reconsider those increases in the following years. Also, I'd just like to say that I think that sidewalks are a real nice thing, and you might consider including that in zoning in new building here in Marquette. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address Commissioner at this time? Please state your name, physical address.
Hello, my name's Joanne Kanak Beauchamp. I live at 328 Harrison Street in the City of Marquette, and I'm here tonight because I oppose the proposed rate increase for electricity from the Board of Light and Power. I was a little confused at first about what this percentage rate was going to be, so I called the Board of Light and Power, and I asked the lady that answered the phone. I thought it was 8.5% over a period of three years, but when she told me it was 8.5% each year, three years in a row, I quickly calculated that to be 25.5% of an increase, so a quarter percent increase in electric rates. And she said, "Well, the commission said they were going to wait to vote on this because they wanted the residents to get prepared." And I said, "Well, how are we supposed to get prepared for this? Are we supposed to go out and buy candles and keep our lights off?" And of course, she laughed, and everyone I worked with who I told this to laughed, but in reality, I know I've been running around the house trying to keep the lights off even though the rate hasn't gone into effect yet, just to get prepared for that, and also wondering about replacing electric dryer that we have. I'm concerned about the electric rate because I haven't had a raise at my job for five and a half years now, and my salary's the same, which means if I pay more for electricity, my standard of living will drop. I've been working for 40 years of my life so far, and the highest raise I've ever had has been a 3% raise or a cost-of-living raise or a step raise. So I'm wondering why, first of all, it has to go up to this high rate of 8.5% for three years in a row, and if somebody's getting a raise from this, maybe a CEO, because I have never gotten a raise that high in my life. Also, I would like, and I hope someone answers this, that I've been told that for the past 20 years, there has been no increase in our electric rates, and now all of a sudden we're going to do the 25%. Why haven't they been gradually increasing this over the past 20 years instead of just hitting us with such a high increase?
30 seconds, ma'am.
So I hope that gets answered for me tonight at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address Commissioner at this time?
Good evening. You're in Malanquin and 8 Marquette Drive. It is always easy to be a Monday morning quarterback, and I'm referring to the Board of Light and Power increase rates. Both you as a commission are very intelligent, as well as the Board of Light and Power commission. Those people were elected by the citizens of Marquette County, just as the citizens of Marquette were elected, you people, to this position as well. And so trying to second guess would be foolish on everybody's part. These guys and gals know how to run and distribute power really, really well, and I think they deserve to do that. Second guessing why the increases weren't taking effect the past 20 years, it's immaterial. They need the money right now, and I encourage you to go forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address Commissioner at this time?
Frank Chef Berettro, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on items 901 and 902. These are my opinions. You're still not allowing public comment prior to voting in board appointments despite previous requests. You were asked nicely again to please make a simple change of the format to allow public comment ahead of appointments. Also, before tonight, you neglected to read the consent agenda for three meetings in a row in the interest of time. Why all of a sudden these page-long consent agendas? As a result, the television audience never knew that they paid out 1.8 million plus 4.6 million plus 10.6 million at your last three meetings. Surely, these disbursements are legitimate, except the viewing audience deserves to know. You're not lending worthy causes the recognition they deserve by omitting their consent items from the airwaves. As you seven slept at 2:45 a.m. Saturday, October 5th, a bicyclist ran into a corner curb at Fourth Street at Ohio. He flipped over his handlebars, and he slammed onto the cement beneath his bike. He was too badly shaken to proceed right away. More than likely, he was intoxicated. Soon, the likelier reason dawned on me. Most of the newer corner curbs are beveled around the entire 90-degree corner. Cyclists have grown complacent in that newer street gaits provide the safer, fully beveled design. Even with sober eyes, beveled and unbeveled curbs appear similar at night when riding 10 miles per hour on a bicycle. The raised curbs are also a pain compared to the fully beveled design for pedestrians and especially for people with disabilities. Please try to bevel those curbs next spring before you split someone's head open. Along the same line, two small signs are missing on East Ridge Street that warn sidewalk users of the steep staircases. For months upon months, the signposts have stood empty where injuries have occurred. You're inviting trouble. All summer long, the downtown water fountain worked improperly, although the water quality tasted better than in years past. Every unsuspecting user sprayed water up to five feet, occasionally hitting people on the sidewalk. It's clear that those who maintain our services and who perform well incidentally aren't the ones who rely on them. September 30th, Mr. Ryan questioned if the former ball field off Pioneer Road might lie near a possible hospital site. The general area is too near a recreational zone to accommodate such an imposing structure. Why not interest the hospital in an easily accessible site like the West Rail Yard rather than consider leveling 30 to 40 acres of woods to die for? Most other cities would deem those woods worthy of their showcase park. And what's to come of the current hospital, which has seen several semi-recent multimillion-dollar additions? What an incredible waste.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address Commissioner at this time?
Bob Kambenzi, 306 North Sixth Street, Marquette. Concerning the Board of Light and Power rate increase, I support the 8.5% increase for the first year. However, at this point, I oppose the second and third year proposed rate increases. I think if you grant them the first year rate increase, and let's see what happens. The Board of Light and Power needs to show us a plan for proposed upgrades and improvements, including a timeline and cost projections. I don't know if any of you have seen that. I don't think the public has seen that. Not just, "We need 8.5% each year for three years because our consultant says we do." So I'd really appreciate it if you'd give that some thought when this item comes up. Secondly, I'd like to thank both Mayor Johnny DePietro and Commissioner Jason Schneider for their years of service. I know you do get compensated for it, but I know you also put in an awful lot of time. And when we get to the next commission meeting, the new commissioners will be seated real quick, and typically, the guys that are going out leave the room, and I don't know if you go down the street, Spring Street a little ways, or if you go up there on Prescott Isle Avenue to the other place, but anyhow, thanks for your, all the time you put in.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address Commissioner at this time?
I'm Mike Plord. I live at 1302 North McClellan in Marquette, and first of all, I'm talking about the Board of Light and Power issue, and I've done research on that and found out, the answer to your question, I hope, is one of the reasons why rate increases haven't taken place over the last bunch of years is because partially the economic downturn. And we know that the board members are our friends and neighbors, and they're very sensitive to what's going on, and so they decided that they would hold back rate increases while people, things were difficult for people. Things are a little better now. Things are getting difficult for the Board of Light and Power. So I characterize the rate increase really as paying back a loan. I think that the people in Marquette really kind of got a loan as far as the rate increases are concerned. I support the rate increases. It's something that they need to have, they need to have the cash flow, and one of the things that people may not realize as well is we have the cheapest power anywhere, I think in the United States, if not just the state of Michigan. And so the Board of Light and Power has done a great job, and it's time for us to kind of pay back that loan. Is it going to be a bite for people? Yeah, absolutely. No question. But it's just something that's necessary and has to be done. So I wanted to say that, and I also wanted to say the same thing as Mr. Kambenzi said. John, you and I, we've known each other for a long time. Our kids grew up together, and we've done a lot of things. We've coached together, we've hoisted a few together, and I hope we'll hoist a few more as time goes on. But I just want to say that when you told me that you were running for city commission the first time, I knew that the City of Marquette was going to get a break, and they really did. I think you've done a great job. The good news is that you're going to be around, and your experience and your expertise and your intelligence is going to be available to people. You are one of the most intelligent men I've ever met, people I've ever met, I should say, and that says a lot because I've met a lot of people over time, and you're also one of the most personable people I've ever met, and I love your sense of humor, especially at the meetings and that. So whatever you choose to do, I know it's going to be fun, it's going to be great, and just glad to be around you. Jason, I just really got to know you over the last year. Didn't know you when you first got elected, but I think you've been on a very, very professional job as well, and I just want to say also that I think you're a leader among young entrepreneurs in town, and I hope you continue to do that. I think you've worked hard to make the area very, very attractive for young entrepreneurs, and I think that's going to continue, and I hope so also. And Sarah, I want to thank you for what you've just done. My daughter Kristy, as you know, was diagnosed the same time you were, and that's when I first met you, and she's done as well also, and I think it's wonderful what you've done, and she's going to think that as well when she finds out, but all of that, I just wanted to make sure that I said that, so thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address Commissioner at this time? Anyone else wishing to address Commissioner at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public... Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. You move to consent agenda. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move the consent agenda to be approved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
You can accept that.
Second.
Thank you.
That was with the exception noted by Commissioner Neme earlier. The bill's payable.
Okay. Did you want to read that, Commissioner Neme, or?
Sure, Your Honor. It's, we would be withdrawing check number 57819 in the amount of $312.14, which is a travel reimbursement to Commissioner Kimbensey for the MML conference. We'll approve that after the rest of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything further? Seeing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll make a motion that we approve check number 57819 in the amount of $312.14, a reimbursement to Commissioner Kimbensey, and we allow Commissioner Kimbensey to abstain from the voting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Schneider? Commissioner Neme, anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Commissioner Schneider?
Nothing.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. City clerk, show the record that Commissioner Kimbensey has abstaining. Thank you. With that, we'll move to unfinished business, 12-88... 12-901, rates for light and power for the Board of Light and Power. Commissioners?
Clerk?
Oh, that's right.
Clerk, read the item first, Your Honor.
Yes. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, at the August 26, 2013 commission meeting, a public hearing was held on the Board of Light and Power's rate design and moved to tonight's meeting. At the August 12, 2013 commission meeting, the BLP presented the cost of service rate study for a three-year period. BLP's executive director and its professional consultant, Utility Financial Solutions LLC, provided the city commission with technical information that supported the BLP's request for a rate increase. The proposed increase would average 8.5% each year in 2014, 15, and 16. The BLP adopted the new rate structure at their meeting on July 30, 2013. The BLP and city commission met again on August 19 and October 22 in a joint work session to discuss the rate design. According to the city charter, section 11-7C, states that the Board of Light and Power shall have the power and authority to fix all rates for light and power, subject to confirmation by the city commission, which rate shall become effective 30 days after such confirmation. Fiscal effect as reflected in the rate schedule. Recommendation: Confirm the Board of Light and Power's rate design adopted by the Board of Light and Power at their July 30, 2013 meeting for the period 2014, 15, and 16. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Mr. Frank Cheperto wanted to address the Commissioner at this time?
These are my opinions. August 26, Mistress Coin stated that voting no to postpone the final vote until tonight would force the BLP to return with another plan. The attorney warned you that you must vote on what's presented, an 8.5% increase for each of the next three years. This is why you needed to vote it down as advised to give our BLP due time to return with a one-year option in time for tonight's vote. Instead, Mr. Ryan motioned on August 26 to vote tonight to approve all three years of increases. He read his lengthy, pre-written explanation indicating that he decided in advance for the public hearing. After a long pause, Mr. Coin seconded for the sake of discussion. At some point, all seven of you lost your presence of mind to pursue the year time option. Late in your discussion, Mr. Schneider finally mentioned it, but this idea was lost again when Mistress Coin and Schneider himself said they'd vote for the three years of increases tonight. Any notion of taking one year at a time vanished. September 9, Mr. Schneider admitted his regret in voting to decide on all three years of increases tonight. He's, quote, frustrated by the cavalier attitude of BLP management, and he wished they'd listened to the one-year option. Then he blamed the BLP of having the audacity to say it's the commission's fault when, in fact, it is the commission's fault. What lacked on your part was any action to have the BLP return on September 9 with a first-year option to meet tonight's voting deadline. Mr. Ryan then repeated his earlier spiel that the BLP board is elected by residents, they hired consultants to analyze the data, were, quote, "putting them in the position of not having adequate funds," or playing with fire. The latter two statements are preposterous. Delaying the latter two increases offers us the versatility of analyzing the data annually and adjusting the percentages to account for the prevailing variables come those times. This way, we're not locked in at 8.5%, whether up or down. The BLP isn't at risk whatsoever. In fact, they're better assured. Mr. Ryan, as well as the BLP representatives, know that big business is full of surprises and enormous expenses, many unforeseeable. Technologies emerge, major equipment breaks down, regulations change, catastrophic storms strike, and oftentimes, they don't. By handling a year at a time, we achieve the flexibility of adjusting the increases to the benefit of all parties involved. At this late point, you're advised to vote down the proposal and to have the BLP submit a first-year proposal on November 25. Apologize to our BLP for not getting on the stick sooner when you had ample time to vote on a one-year option tonight. Don't leave our residents potentially holding the bag because he refused to promptly realize your oversight and to entertain a vote to allow the BLP to return with a one-year option.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move we confirm the Board of Light and Power's rate design adopted by the Board of Light and Power at their July 20, or July 30, 2013 meeting for the period 2014, 2015, and 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Coin? Commissioner Ryan?
You know, I know this is not a popular issue. You know, I'm a customer of the Board of Light and Power as well, and believe it or not, for an old guy who lives with a wife and no children, well, we do have a lot of kids around the house, actually, but they're not there permanently. We spend a lot of money on electric power, and I'm on social security and a pension, so I understand the concerns. But I think we have to make a business decision here, not a political decision or not a social decision. I mean, we can't overlook the fact that the Board of Light and Power did go out and hire a professional consultant to analyze their situation. And he came back and said, "If you're going to be able to do the job that you want to do, to continue to serve this community, to continue to provide reliable power, to continue to be a low-cost power provider, then you have to raise your rates to this level, or you're not going to make it. Or you're going to find yourself in the same boat as a lot of other public utilities in the Upper Peninsula, not just power, but sometimes water and sewer, which are basically going down the drain because they've put it off, put it off, and put it off, and haven't done the job." Now, as I've said before, if there's one criticism of the Board of Light and Power, it's you should have done it two years ago, and you should have done it last year. But your hearts were in the right place. I understand that. The economic conditions were not good. And this idea of doing it for one year, you know, the situation is, they could have come and said, "We want a 20% rate increase." They're doing exactly what people ask them to do, and that is to phase in this increase over three years. The money that's needed is what would be generated by raising the rates this amount for that period of time. You know, we're just so fortunate. A number of years ago, someone suggested we sell the BLP, and they were shot down quickly. You know, we have power rates that are so much lower than anybody else, and even if these rates go up, they're still going to be so much lower than anybody else in our neighborhood. I mean, it's just a fact. And again, I understand the pain. I understand it's going to affect individuals, it's going to affect businesses, but if you go out on the street any day, I guarantee you, you'll see Board of Light and Power trucks going up and down the street, replacing power poles, replacing power lines, doing the kind of everyday maintenance that needs to be done to keep that utility operating. We've had a chance to tour, to see some of the major maintenance projects they undertake. This is a huge business, folks, and if we want to have this kind of utility, then we have to give them the support they need. And that's why I've continued to say, you know, I think we need to do this. We've, we had a long presentation here with all the facts. We had two joint meetings with the Board of Light and Power. This is not something that's been done in the dark. All of those meetings were open to the public. They've laid it out on the table, you know, and I guess I'm getting a little animated here because I really feel that this is such an outstanding organization, and we want to keep it that way. Let me give you an example. Think the city's water utility. That was, that suffered neglect for many years. And in the last recent years, we've really begun to pay some attention, and now we're spending several million dollars every year to deal with issues that could have been dealt with before. We're talking about, we still have pipes in the ground that are 100 years old, you know? Well, this is why you have to deal with it proactively, and I think this is what the Board of Light and Power is trying to do. So I feel very strongly, I greatly sympathize with the fact that it's going to affect people. I understand that. I'm not oblivious to that reasoning, but you know, if our power rates were as high as our neighbors were, then they probably could have raised rates 5%. But because they're so low, they have to raise them this amount. You know, 25% of not much is a lot less than 25% of a lot. So I think it's the right decision. I think if this board felt that it was not the right decision, then we shouldn't sit here making political decisions. We should have gone out and hired our own rate consultant to analyze it and provide some actual data that says this is not right.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coin?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I just have a couple of brief comments. You know, we've had this argument and discussion previously, and we were ready to vote, and the reason I asked to have it delayed was because, both for homeowners and for large businesses, this could be a substantial burden. I think we tried, at least I did, try to approach this with a very critical eye, and I think, to me, the Board of Light and Power convinced me that this was necessary. I think the reality of the 25% raise over three years, if you look back in 30 years, there was only one rate increase. So over a 30-year period, it really represents about 1% a year, which is essentially, you know, less than the cost of living raise over a 30-year period. The question I had was, why do they really need this? I think the rate consultant convinced me why. In the last joint meeting we had with the Board of Light and Power was very productive, very helpful, and it was precipitated by the threat of We Energy closing down in four months. And then the next day, there's a headline, "No, it's not closing down." And the next day, it's, "Well, they are closing down," and so who knows? That's an issue. It's a very important issue for the city because if it closes down, there is no backup except to purchase profoundly expensive power at rates as high as $1,000 a kilowatt. I mean, it's terrible. I think in the last meeting we had with them, they were able to share with us their long-term plan of creating another generation unit, which would supplement an aging generator unit now, and allow, if Wisconsin Energy, for example, did close, it would allow them to have greater capacity to back up, as well as to encourage businesses who come here because they're running close to capacity right now. They don't have a lot of leeway. And I think that is also another reason why these rates to accumulate capital are important because a new generator, generation unit is going to cost probably $60 million. Well, it makes more sense to begin to accumulate a cash reserve in order to do that, in order to bond less. So I think those are reasonable things by reasonable people, and because of that, I strongly support this, even though it's unpopular, and I completely agree with Commissioner Ryan. I think, and all you have to do is talk to your friends who live across the street out in Chalkley Township, who are supplied by Alger Delta, and the neighbor across the street is supplied by the Board of Light and Power, and see the substantial difference. And I mean, they have to have this in order to keep their excellent service, their reliability, and their ability to, in the future, give us power to protect us if We Energy closes or if their unit fails or wears out. So I think it's a very, it's not a crazy, stupid idea to support this. I strongly support it and would urge my commissioners to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coin. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with my fellow commissioners, the two who have spoken so far, that I will support this increase. When we talk about the one versus three years, you know, there's been talk about, "Well, we can only vote on what they give us," and that's true. We could politically try to coerce them to say, "Well, we don't like the three years. We want you to come back with one year," but they don't have to do that. And if I were in their shoes, I wouldn't do that. If they believe that a three year is appropriate, that's what I would bring back to this commission. We would be at loggerheads. It would be like Washington, D.C. You know, it's ridiculous. I have looked at the figures of Board of Light and Power. I looked at the three audits that were available for this point, and just recently, we got their audits as of June 30, 2013, their last fiscal year. Their retained earnings have gone from $12 million down to about $8 or $9 million. Their cash went from about $16 million down to about $10 or $12 million. And a lot of that cash is cash they can't use for things other than the things that it's dedicated to, like landfill closures that the DEQ requires them to hold and reserve. They do need that operating capital. They've been good stewards of our money. I'm hoping that the three-year increase will get them some extra cash, something that they can put aside for future, because there are going to be future needs that our electric utility is going to have to deal with. We've, for years and years, probably, I guess, 30 years, we've had low electric rates. We've enjoyed that, and we'll enjoy good rates in the future, but any extra cash that they take from their ratepayers, it's our utility. It's our money. It'll be used for our benefit, and I trust our elected board, as I think most of us do. You all vote them in. They answer to you just as we answer to you, so it's, I think they're good stewards of our money, and I think this increase is well justified. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neme. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Kimbensey?
Well, I'm going to disagree with the three-year. I'm a fan of the one-year, and I feel like I've come over from being a fan of wanting to kind of not vote on anything simply because it's such a shock to have 25% in three years. And comparing this to what we do as commissioners, I did a little research, and for the record, I want to read this into there. Our infrastructure system for sanitary sewer, we have 88 miles. Our annual maintenance or recommended replacement is one mile per year at $650,000. For our water, we have 98.7 miles. Our annual maintenance is one mile per year at $600,000. For streets, we have 90.3 miles, and currently, our annual maintenance is two miles per year at $900,000. Our gravel, we have six miles. Currently, our annual maintenance is 3,700 linear feet at $444,000 per year. Sidewalks, we have 67.6 miles, and we currently replace .5 miles per year. Pathways, we have 18.1 miles, and we currently repair 3,000 linear feet at $75,000 per year. Pathway extensions, we currently do .5 miles a year at $216,000. Stormwater, we have 52.6 miles. This varies if we do anything at all, and it's usually around $600,000 a year. Our bridge system varies. We usually try and put $50,000 a year aside. In our buildings and grounds, we have 28.3 million in valuation. Our annual maintenance or replacement recommendation is 2%. Our annual maintenance or replacement recommendation is 2%. At 552,000 per year on average. When you add all these up, it's 4.9 million. We currently do not bond for more than 4 million of infrastructure improvements. This does not include paving. This does not include patching. This does not include emergency water breaks, emergency sewer breaks. I think what we're doing here is we're saying, let's give the three increases because they need it, because they want some financial security. When I look at what we are spending on our taxpayers, we are nowhere near giving them financial security. And I would say every year, we probably spend seven or eight million on replacements. We can't keep up. Now, we have a parks and rec plan in place that we approved for 5.2 million. We have a group working on a new senior center, and I'm guessing that's about 9 million. We have our trail systems. We have Hartwood. We are currently paying that off at 80-some thousand per year. And we also have a plan for a new fire hall. We haven't taken into account the public schools. We have historical data that shows when you tax a community on revenue-only generating taxes, which could be a rate increase, all of the other things suffer. Now, everyone knows in business, there's not one plan. You don't just say, this is the only way I can make my business work. The city has done it with our capital improvement plan. We have come up with a plan to say what we can afford. Our current total millage for non-homestead is 52.0875 mills. The only two that are higher than us in Marquette County are the City of Nagani and the City of Ishbemene. All of us have said, we cannot raise taxes. So, what do we do? We bond for no more than 4 million a year for our improvements. The BLP has told us they do not want to bond. They want to raise rates. At the MML conference, there are several ways that the energy market can help local municipalities put more into their infrastructure. One of the biggest ways that I see that we can do this is an energy service contract where you actually contract with the company and they help you put money into the new infrastructure, the green infrastructure you need. And they actually make a promise that you will make those savings back. And the energy savings go into paying for that infrastructure. It takes the burden off of the community as a whole. If the city raised taxes 8.5% every year for three years, I think all of us would be escorted out of here and pretty fast. I think we need to think about this in terms of what's best for the overall community. I'd like to thank the Board of Light and Power. I think we've got a great relationship right now. We've been meeting more than I think past commissions have for probably 30 years. And I think there's a lot of good things going on, a lot of collaboration. But I really think that an 8.5% increase and slowing it down so that our schools, our trail systems, our fire hall, and our senior center can get attention too. You know, one of the things we talk about is how much the City of Marquette subsidizes the outside communities. You know, and the BLP customers stretch all the way up to the Nagani Township line. The City of Marquette gives PILT payment rate discounts to the BLP. We have Lakeview Arena that we subsidize. We have the YMCA of Marquette County and the Hartwood. At what point does the City of Marquette say, we can't support everyone else? I think there's a lot of discussion that needs to come of this. You know, our library does it. Our library has different rates for the city in which those services are given. And I think that the dialogue needs to continue between city staff and the BLP. But I really don't think our community can afford this. And I think if we heard the majority of the community, I don't think there's any way that we could explain it to them why it's justified to do three 8.5% increases a year when what we pay for our own infrastructure is a pittance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kembensee. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I certainly will support the rate increase. I think it's entirely reasonable. It's rational. We've had at least two commission meetings, I can recall, when the BLP came in and explained the rationale and the reasoning for it. We had at least two special meetings with them. They literally did go over the numbers in great detail. They certainly gave us a great peek into the future of what their planning is and where they think they're going to be able to go. This is critical for literally the City of Marquette. And as we've, I think, said repeatedly, we are enjoying some of the lowest electrical rates in the state of Michigan. And while indeed, there will be an increase on those rates, you're increasing against a very low rate to begin with. If you measure and when you measure society as we live today and as we exist, primary to that is reliable electric power. If this one central core, one central thing upon which we are all built, it is electric power. And we are blessed, I think, with having a remarkably efficient organization that does that for us, that's citizen-owned. It's our utility. It's our electric board. Our citizens elect the folks that run that board and have evidently, and evidently, have indeed placed great confidence in them. So, I certainly stand with the other commissioners, I think, who have made a very strong case for accepting the recommendation of the experts and the rate increase so requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Schneider?
This one, I'm definitely torn on. And I will say that I still don't know exactly how I'm going to vote in a few minutes here. The way that this has come forward, I understand very much the position that the Board of Light and Power is in and that it needs, it needs the rate increases to be able to continue doing operations as it's been doing. I get that on a business model. I really do get that. What frustrates me is, I think Commissioner Kembensee has a lot of valid points about other ways in which we can move into the future. And when the commission had asked for an initial work session, and I will break away and say the work sessions have been really good and I've enjoyed the dialogue and I'm glad that those are moving and I hope that those continue to move forward regardless of what happens with the vote this evening. But when the commission asked for, you know, can we do one year for further discussions? When the commission asked for, what are the other options that are out there? The only response that we received as a commission was, the lights are on, the lights are off. If this doesn't get approved, the lights go off. And I feel that there's a number of other options between those two. And we never really had the opportunity to discuss those. They were never presented to us. The attitude generally was, no, this is what we're proposing. Take it or leave it. And I feel very much that, as commissioners for the city on all levels, we're kind of the last check and the check and balances to say, you know, does this really meet all of the city needs? Is there a better way to do it? And I guess I'm just frustrated at the stop of that portion of the dialogue. It was just one piece. I've mentioned time and time again in all of our meetings that I would support a one-year increase so that dialogue about where we're going and how we can deal with this would happen. And I was disturbed that that didn't happen. I was disturbed that when I brought up, you know, where are we going in the future as far as long-term sustainability? Gas was brought up. Natural gas was brought up, which is brought about by fracking. And nuclear was brought up. Wind and solar were not brought up. And it's frustrating to see that part. So, you know, I, again, I'm not really sure which way I'm going to go, but I generally don't like the direction this is going of the three-year rate increase. I really wish that we could have done one and continued the dialogue that I think we've started really well. I think that we would have found something that has made everybody truly happy if we could have stemmed the three-year with a one-year and said, okay, let's open into broader dialogues with the community and with the commission. So, thank you for everybody for listening to my thoughts on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Any other commissioner at this time?
Seeing none. What I want to bring up is the last coal boat that came into the City of Marquette to deliver coal to Light and Power increased that load by $18,000. And from that point forward, you're going to start seeing those kind of increases in coal delivery due to the fact that within 10 years, the federal government is going to shut down every coal-burning electric utility plant in the United States. This is what they want to do, is eliminate all coal-burning plants and have these plants switch over to the natural gas pipelines, which everybody's going to have to prepare for this. And this is part of what Light and Power is looking at within the next 10 years, is switching over to natural gas, which they have, I mean, natural gas companies will have to build lines coming into the City of Marquette. And this is going to be part of what is, they're going to need this to get ready for the 21st century. The regulations that the federal government is putting on these utilities. And if you think that this is an effect for us, electrical customers, it's going to affect many parts of the country, such as Kentucky, Tennessee, all the big coal mines that used to rely on producing millions of tons of coal for the utilities. So, anyways, within the 10-year range, you're going to be seeing that these companies are going to have to be switching to natural gas. So, I believe this is going to be our part as far as helping our utility stay solvent and start to prepare for the shift from coal burning to natural gas. And one of the things, we get all this information, and I'm sorry to say that a lot of the customers don't have the privilege of having all this information. But when we were going through all these meetings and getting the red flags from the federal government, this is what they're sending to us, is to get ready to switch to natural gas. So, that's one of the things that's nice about the 21st century. You won't have no choice because they will not permit utility companies that produce electricity to start, continue burning coal. And that's why we're at where we're at today. So, with that, commissioners, I'm going to ask the question on unfinished business 12-901 on rates for Light and Power for the Board of Light and Power. Is there a motion?
There is.
Okay. There's been a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Klein, to accept the recommendation of number 12-901 and confirm the Board of Light and Power's rate design adopted by the Board of Light and Power at their July 30, 2013 meeting for the period 2014, 2015, and 2016. With that, I'll ask, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose.
Oppose.
Motion passes 6 to 1. Shown. Commissioner Kembensee voting no. Thank you, City Clerk. And with that, we'll move to one more item under unfinished business. That would be 12-903 Truck Ordinance Number 608. There's a motion by Commissioner Klein and seconded by Commissioner Amy. Commissioner Klein, you have the floor.
Well, I really didn't make a motion. I just asked to have it placed on the agenda. So, I would like to make a motion. Now, to cancel the public hearing this Wednesday regarding the proposed truck ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. And the second, Commissioner Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Klein, anything further?
Yes. I will try to speak first on behalf of the three commissioners, myself, Commissioner Kembensee, and Commissioner Stonehouse. We have been meeting at length with Lundin to try to come to some kind of agreement and solution to the issue of 80 trucks a day coming through the city. I'm happy that we can say, the three of us, that we think that there is an agreement pending. That agreement, I think, is based on a partnership and will meet the needs of the mining company and the needs of the city. I can't divulge those presently, but hopefully in the next few days, we will be able to discuss that further. I would hope that we would have a three-month, I would recommend that we have a three-month moratorium on a truck ordinance. And I think the truck ordinance as it is presently existing will have to be changed significantly if this partnership agreement goes through. I think it would be less burdensome on all the people who have voiced concerns about it. It, I think that we have, I think, 18 or 19 pages of verbal and written testimony, much of which has been very helpful for us to relook at some of the issues in the truck ordinance. They've been very helpful and productive. So, I really view this as a great possibility. And since Lundin has purchased the mine, they have been very upfront in dealing with this. The vice president from Lundin in Toronto has been here at every meeting and has the advantage of having no past history or baggage with all the stuff that's gone on for the past seven years. And he's been upfront and very forthright in dealing with it. So, I would hope that my fellow commissioners would indeed vote in favor of delaying any discussion on a truck ordinance until 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. And this was seconded by Commissioner Amy. Commissioner Amy?
I don't have a lot more because I wasn't privy to the details of the subcommittee. But I know that they've been working hard on our behalf and on everyone's behalf to resolve this issue and include a number of different entities. So, I would defer to them or perhaps defer to the city manager. Perhaps he has some comments he'd like to make.
City Manager, Bill Fiedler.
Thank you, Your Honors. No, only I am grateful for the wonderful support we've been getting from the subcommittee and their leadership. I'm grateful that we're blessed by having neighbors who care very deeply about how we solve this in a regional way. We've gotten all kinds of great feedback from both the community organizations, the private users. We're getting great support from our representatives in Lansing. And there have been some breakthrough opportunities that have come through since this was first proposed. And I think it's a very prudent step to make sure that we stay true to our pledge, that we let everybody know we're listening, and that we keep working with all the parties who share the goals we do in trying to put a regional transportation solution in place. So, I'm just grateful to have been part of it and to have seen the type of leadership we've seen demonstrated. I'm very hopeful that we'll find a solution that's good for everybody.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support this because I didn't favor heading down this road in the first place, as I made clear at our last meeting. I can tell you, there are people in local government and business and industry who feel they're being used as ponds by the City of Marquette, and I think that's pretty unfortunate. I would have been more in favor of moving forward with a new ordinance and kind of put this one to bed rather than, you know, I'm very much in favor of a regional transportation study. I think that's part of the subject, part of the discussion. I hope maybe that would have been part of the discussion tonight. I, I, I hope maybe that would have been part of the discussion tonight. But I, I, I really have questions about how some of our neighbors are going to feel in entering into that kind of discussion if we still have this ordinance in our back pocket as a club. So, um, as I said, I'll support this, but I kind of wish we had taken it a couple of steps further.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Coyne?
I, I would respond to this. I think, and I would hope that the, we're not using the ordinance as a club because I think if this deal goes through, we will have a new ordinance entirely. It won't be anything like the ordinance that if, that is, was going to be discussed at the public hearing. As far as the regional thing, uh, a regional traffic study, I think, is in the mill. The three of us were very clear in our negotiations that we are very strongly supportive of that. Even if this partnership deal goes through, we are still very, very in, in, behind the regional studies. And I want to speak to, quote, "using this as a pawn." One of the issues that's, I think, really needs to be understood by the citizens who we represent. I, I don't think this is a group of evil people who are just trying to be nasty to our neighbors. Our job is to be responsible, to run this city in a responsible way. If the logging truck, I mean, excuse me, if the mining trucks, eighty strong, each weighing a hundred sixty-eight thousand pounds, comes through Sugarloaf Avenue to Wright Street, it will, within a year, turn that street into dirt, along with ruining all the infrastructure that's under that street and Wright Street. It will destroy it. In order to prepare that route, it's going to cost ten million dollars. And we don't have ten million dollars. Now, we have a sister city in this state, Detroit, that is bankrupt. And if we have to build an infrastructure and a road for ten million dollars, we can't do it. We don't have the money. We can't bond for it enough to afford it. We can't raise taxes enough to afford it. Simply, we can't afford it. Lundin understands that, and Lundin has a similar problem that we do. They need to get their product from point A to point B. We need to protect the citizens' financial integrity, the, the safety of nine thousand students at Northern, and the quality of life which we all benefit from in this town. And if this town turns into a town with dirt roads with at least eighty, if not more, now that there are other mines being considered, other gravel and sand pits being considered, and no other way to do this, we would be derelict in our duties. And it's, it really is important for people to understand that we're not using this as a pawn, folks. We are protecting this city, period, from bankruptcy, from, uh... Commissioner Kembensee very specifically listed a whole bunch of things which we need to do, which we can't afford. And we, it'll probably be fifty years before we can afford that if we have to do what we are being forced to do. So it's not a pawn. It's our responsibility for this city. If other cities and other townships and counties are unhappy with that, then they're free to help us pay for that. But so far, that has not been forthcoming at all. So I would hope that we would support this and understand that this is going to be, I hope, very helpful. And we'll have a truck ordinance, and I think it is not unreasonable to take all those eighteen pages of comments, put them into another truck ordinance, and I think it is not unreasonable to have a work session, as Don has said, if we have to do that. And we are going to have to have a truck ordinance because right now, it's frankly, the Wild West. I was driving with Representative Keevila today, showing him some of the plans, and followed a logging truck down Third Street at thirty-five miles an hour. Third Street, thirty-five miles an hour. How about that? You think that's safe? I don't. Is that going to be a truck route? No, it's not. There are going to be some truck routes, but not all this other stuff that is obviously causing great difficulty for businesses and people and people in Big Bay. So we'll have to redo all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Uh, if I can just elaborate, one thing I think Commissioner Coyne may have glossed over a little bit too quickly is that the whole issue of how streets and roads are paid for in the state. For example, in, in townships, roads are paid for by the county. The County Road Commission comes up and they, they pay for the roads. They pay for the construction and the maintenance of the roads. That's how that's done. And there are rare instances where a township may have a millage to get something very specifically done. By contrast, in Michigan cities, those streets are paid for by the residents of the city. And in the case of Marquette, the only income that we derive is what we get from property tax. So when we talk about ten million dollars being chewed alive in, in the, in the destruction of, of, of Sugarloaf and Wright Streets, the repair and the rehabilitation of that street is strictly on the city of the, of Marquette and on the taxpayers of Marquette. And putting that in a little bit different perspective, we spend about four million dollars a year, as Commissioner Kembensee mentioned, doing basic road construction. So that's more than we could possibly do in one year. And when we begin to look at other things that are on our, our list, potential senior center at, you know, pick it up, pick a number. Certainly, we have two fire stations approaching obsolescence that will need replacement. So there's real money there, and there's real money that would have to come from the taxpayers of the city to undo that type of damage. So when we look at, at the, at our duties as commissioners and, and protecting our city, this is part of it. And this is an important difference that all the public, I think, needs to understand. Cities don't receive tax money from registration of vehicles in the city. That goes off to the state. City doesn't receive any special fuel money because we sold fuel in the city beyond what might come back in revenue share. And it's very, very difficult, not only for cities like Marquette, but for Ishming, Nagani, for any of them in the state. So this is a problem that goes beyond simply here, though here is a very clear example of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I just feel I have to somewhat respond now, too, because, first of all, I didn't say that, that, um... I said what, the feedback I've received from people is they feel like pawns. And I understand why. I understand why the people in Big Bay feel that way. You know, I understand somewhat why some people in Marquette Township feel that way. I understand why the logging industry feels that way, because it's pretty clear now that our, our only goal was to make a deal with, with Lundin. And yet, we've had to come out with this very onerous ordinance to make that happen. When I say work with the local units of government, there is a better solution. There is a long-term solution. There's a good solution. It would go through Marquette Township. It would be, it would be good for everyone. But we don't get a, you know, we don't get to work with Marquette Township unless we work with them, and that's my point. I'm looking out first for the city of Marquette. But I think the way to do it is to work with our neighbors, to work with the Marquette County Road Commission, to work with Marquette Township, to work with the county of Marquette. You know, not, not, not to stick it in their face, you know. And so I, I just, I just think that's important. And I, and I don't think these roads would turn the, these trucks would turn the roads to sand. We have those trucks running on Wright Street today hauling limestone from the Presque Isle Dock.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Coyne?
Oh, I would respond in that the purpose of this is, we have needed a truck ordinance for probably twenty years because all you need to do is drive around Marquette wherever, and you see trucks all over the place that have no business driving in residential neighborhoods, on business streets, and we need a truck ordinance. Now, to then say this truck ordinance is simply for mining, no. It's probably the reason why, after all these years, the city commission, us, others, finally got it together to say, "We need a truck ordinance," and this is obviously why. And, uh, I agree, we have lots of trucks, but the roads that they're riding on are built so they could function. But you add eighty more or a hundred more, that's when it's going to fall apart. And these trucks weigh more than an Abrams tank. So how about eighty Abrams tanks running down Sugarloaf Road every day? Not, not too good. So I think it's naive to, to dismiss that. And we're not doing this just for the mining company. We are doing it because it is an issue, and the mining company recognizes the problem we're facing. We recognize their problem, and I think we're going to work something out as partners and friends in a good way.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none. There's, uh, City Clerk?
Mayor, the motion should actually be to cancel a special meeting which contained the public hearing?
Yes. So... Did you want to read that back then? So Commissioner Coyne and Commissioner Naimi are on the same page with their motion?
It's, it's simply to cancel the special meeting that was scheduled for Wednesday, the thirtieth.
Truck ordinance six oh eight for three months, I believe. Three months, Commissioner Coyne?
No, just cancel it.
Okay. This is just to cancel it?
Correct.
Okay. With that, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to new business, and that'll be twelve dash eight eight seven, Tourist Park Everybody Plays Grant Application.
Thank you. Mayor background. Recently, staff became aware of a competitive grant opportunity through Grant Time Company for playground equipment. Game Time Company has committed five million dollars to communities through a cost-share program when purchasing playground equipment. Depending on, upon the size and timing of the purchase, communities can be eligible for as much as fifty percent grant. Staff is recommending the city commission consider initiating a grant application for Tourist Park. The recent Tourist Park land use plan prioritized a new playground in the day-use portion of the park. Total dollars anticipated for the equipment purchase is sixty-five thousand dollars. If the application is successful, the city would be required to pay fifty percent or thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Staff is recommending the local match include nine thousand dollars received from the Michigan Big Green Gym Initiative, and the remainder, twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, be taken from the Tourist Park Fund balance. Staff has reviewed the Tourist Park Fund and confirmed the availability of such funds. Site work and installation will be completed by city staff. Fiscal effect, Tourist Park Fund would require a budget adjustment, of which twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars would come from its fund balance. Recommendation, approve the grant application for an Everybody Plays Grant from Game Time Company to purchase playground equipment from Tourist Park. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's the pleasure? Commissioner, Commissioner Schneider?
I move that we approve the grant application for the Everybody Plays Grant from Game Time Company to purchase playground equipment for Tourist Park.
Thank you. Sir, Commissioner Kembensee?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Um, you know, I know this came up on short notice, but I think it makes a lot of sense. It allows us to save fifty percent on some of the, the playground equipment should we be accepted for the grant application. I think all in all, this is a good news story, except for the nine thousand dollars received from the Michigan Big Green Gym Initiative, because when it came to us, the commission pretty much unanimously had asked the staff to work with, um, with the Public Orchard Project with this funding. You know, I don't think it was a directive. I don't think it was, it was written in stone by the commission that that was the funding that should be used for it. But, um, there was a request made by Mr. Feather that that is the money that we use for the Public Orchard. And I would support that nine thousand dollars being pulled from elsewhere since, uh, the commission unanimously during commission comment just kind of all supported that concept. But other than that, I think it's a good news story and recommend that nine thousand come from another source.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Kembensee?
Well, again, I think what we're trying to achieve at Tourist Park is a five-million-dollar project. And certainly, if we want to start chipping away at that, we need to start gathering our money. So, um, I know there's a lot of projects out there we'd like to do like that. But I think Parks and Rec is one of our largest departments and services a large amount of people, and I have no problem spending the money this way. I'd just like to thank the staff for doing the work to go out and find these grants to make our long-term projects happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Kembensee. City Manager, did you have anything?
Thank you, your honor. Only that certainly was the unanimous view of the commission to work with the Orchard Project, and there had been the request, but there was no direction from the commission to use the nine K for that. Uh, and the Orchard Project doesn't have any kind of a plan yet. We've been working with them. And I know the DDA and other representatives have been working with them as well, but they've, they've come back with no plan for how to actually implement the project. We're under kind of a deadline with the grant application, and from some other source would still have to be clarified by the commission because all the money you've authorized is for some other specific requirement. So I'd only ask that if it's going to be, um, supported, that the nine K not be used as proposed, that the commission direct the other source so we still have a chance of meeting the deadline.
Thank you. Commissioner Naimi?
Thank your honor. Um, I think Playground at, at Tourist Park is a, is a meritorious project, but I, too, have concerns about the nine thousand. Looking at the two thousand and twelve audit, we've got fifty-eight thousand in the Tourist Park balance, and that's not even the two thousand and thirteen audits. So I would think that there's sufficient money in that fund balance to, to pay the, the entire match. And I, I'm not real keen on these, these companies that provide grants, and what they're basically doing is providing you a tying arrangement where we can't take that thirty-two thousand and bid out this project and use it for some other company. They're just trying to, to get our business by, by ostensibly providing us thirty-two thousand. I'm not convinced that the, the total value is there, but I, I like the idea of, of a playground at Tourist Park. But I, too, would, uh, agree with the nine thousand. I guess I would make a motion to amend the motion that the entire match come out of the Tourist Park Fund balance.
Thank you, Commissioner Naimi. Commissioner Schneider?
I wasn't quite expecting a motion to, to amend that. Um, I was going to say to staff that...
There's a motion. There's a motion made. It's got to be responded.
Oh, yep.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Naimi, seconded by Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Schneider?
Are we commenting on the motion?
No, that's, that's all deferred his.
Then we're discussing that.
Okay.
I have no further comment to, on the motion. I made the motion. I think it, it, yeah.
Anything further? Commissioner Ryan? Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Naimi, seconded by Commissioner Ryan to... Commissioner Naimi, you want to state that again?
The commission, the motion is to amend the motion to take the entire match out of the Tourist Park Fund balance rather than dedicating the nine thousand from the Michigan Big Green Gym Initiative.
City Clerk, do you have that? With that, I'll ask...
You're going to mo, you're going to vote on the amendment now?
Yeah.
Solely the amendment?
Okay. We can go to discussion now. Commissioner Schneider?
Sure, I can discuss it here, just as anywhere. That darn parliamentary procedural will get you just about every time. It's moot if the, if the, um, Nenam passes, but I definitely wanted to let staff know that, you know, I trust you guys to figure out where, where the funding can come from, and I know that you guys hear that, that we're interested in the Public Orchard as well. So I was just going to leave trust in you guys on that, and I wasn't making a motion specifically to say you have to do something different with that nine thousand dollars. But I, I do support Commissioner Naimi's idea on that. I think that makes sense. So with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne.
I'll support the motion also, but I would ask the manager a question. When is the next budget session? You know, we're on the fifteen-month, month plan now. When, when do we actually sit down and do a budget next time?
At this point, but please don't quote me because I don't have a CFO here. At this point, but please don't quote me because I don't have a CFO here. I believe it'll be in July.
In July.
With a hope to finalize it in August so we can implement in October.
Well, I'm somewhat disappointed by your comments of, not your comments, but the fact that the orchard folks haven't come all up with a plan. I'd like to, at least through this means, give them a message. They ought to have a plan by the budget time in July so they can have an opportunity to fit in with all the other priorities we have. And if they don't, it's not going to happen, which I hope it does happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kembansi?
I'd like to ask staff what we use that money for that we are now taking $9,000 out from.
Well, the fund balances for the tourist park campground, as Commissioner Neme has indicated, there's $58,000 in the fund balance as of last year's audit. This past year, we had a 27% increase in our campership for tourist park. Those dollars are typically set aside for improvements to tourist park campground. As you know, in the land use plan, there's about $500 and maybe $550,000 worth of capital improvements that are scheduled for that facility, as well as 1.2 on the day use side. This facility, a playground, can certainly be, I think, characterized as a, you know, for dual purpose for both day use and the campground. It certainly benefits both sides. So, you know, I think the fund balance could be used towards this solely.
And do we know how much trees cost, or how many we need, or where they're going, or anything like that?
At this point, the city is, you know, working with a gentleman that we've had one meeting with in getting those costs and the plan and location of where a probable or a possible community orchard will be. Until such time that we have a formal approvals and have the staff, you know, have staff look through it, bring it back to the commission, we won't have a true idea as to what that tree count will be.
Thank you. I think this sounds like a great project for the next fiscal year since the snow is going to start hitting pretty soon.
Thank you, Commissioner Kembansi. Any other? Commissioner Ryan?
I think the main thing we're doing here is applying for this grant, right? We don't even know if we're going to get it, so... But to get it, we have to be willing to make the commitment, so...
Right.
You know, as someone who's taken grandchildren to every park in Marquette, we need a new playground at tourist park. There's no question about it. It's ancient, so if we can find a way to do it, let's do it. And at least let's apply for the grant and see what happens.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other commissioners at this time? Seeing none, there's amended motion by Commissioner Neme, seconded by Commissioner Ryan under new business twelve dash eight eight seven. Does anybody want the city clerk to read that back? We don't need you to read that back. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes six to one, showing Commissioner Kembansi voting no. Thank you.
Your Honor, now that we have to vote on the main motion, that was just the amendment to change the funding source.
Right.
Now we have to vote on the main motion as amended.
And that motion is, is there a motion by Commissioner...
We made it. It's the emotion.
By Commissioner Schneider, seconded by Commissioner Kembansi, to accept the recommendation of twelve dash eight eight seven and approve the grant application for Everybody Plays grant from Game Time Company to purchase playground equipment for tourist park. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Still under new business, twelve dash nine oh two, Presque Isle Power Plant, City Commission slash Market Board of Light and Power Working Group. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. At the October 22nd, 2013 Joint City Commission, a Market Board of Light and Power Work Session, it was suggested a small working group be created in order to pursue discussions supporting the continued operation of the Presque Isle Power Plant, as well as the liability of regional electric power. The group will include elected representation from the Market Board of Light and Power and City Commission. The effort of the group would be supported by the city manager and executive director of the Market Board of Light and Power. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, appoint one member of the city commission to serve on a joint city commission, Market Board of Light and Power Working Group. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Mr. Frank Ferto, you want to address this?
These are my opinions. Your intent is to appoint one member of the commission to serve on a joint working group in order to pursue discussions supporting the continued operation of the Presque Isle Power Plant. This statement automatically assumes that your constituents favor maintaining a facility that causes far more public injury in terms of health and visual quality than the worth of the tax revenue it contributes. You worded your agenda supplement, as you did, fully aware that many of us consider that plant the epitome of an ill-placed eyesore at the entrance to one of our nation's premier parks, no less. Thousands of first-time visitors must wonder, just as I did, what is that atrocity doing A book entitled Let's Go Around the Island by Julia Tibbetts chronicles how a small generator grew into a massive belching polluter that looms there today. The tactics used were eerily similar to what we've seen recently with the mine and the proposed roads to accommodate it, the good old boy hurdle-by-hurdle approach. The passage of time revealed Julia Tibbetts' great vision and wisdom, more than the combined total of the commission. Let us seize this opportunity to appoint a member to work with the joint committee to lessen the footprint of that eyesore while maintaining the reliability of our regional power grid. Reduce the plant's capacity to serve perhaps a 15-mile radius west of the current facility, if possible, when funding or grants can be obtained. I realize both the enormous expense and the even greater reward. Mr. Neme is talking to Mr. Schneider. May I repeat that paragraph?
Yes, you may.
That is really rude. Let us seize this opportunity to appoint a member to work with the joint committee to lessen the footprint of that eyesore while maintaining the reliability of our regional power grid. Reduce the plant's capacity to serve perhaps a 15-mile radius west of the current facility, if possible, when funding or grants can be obtained. I realize both the enormous expense and the even greater reward. Realize that the existing plant is a dinosaur. If it were efficient, there'd be no advantage to the mine, or any other entity for that matter, buying power for cheaper from farther away. Just think of the line loss. Please, instead of perpetuating an obsolete plant, serve the majority of our citizens who appreciate nature by restoring the drive to Presque Isle Park, as well as increasing the potential value of the cliff's dow site, assuming the proposed changes ever come to fruition. Mr. Ryan was seen on a recent newscast claiming the city has an obvious interest in keeping the plant operational. He knew well that the ambition is not obvious to a great number of us. Hasn't everyone in town by now noticed that Mr. Ryan invariably favors every action that threatens the rare and priceless beauty that the rest of us hold dear?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Coyne.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion that the commission appoint Commissioner Neme to serve on a joint commission of the Market Board of Light and Power, Power Working Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support that.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
No.
Commissioner Ryan?
Well, it's just there are 160 jobs at the plant. They do make a major contribution to the city as far as tax revenue goes. They are also a huge reliability factor. There is not adequate transmission in this area to replace that plant, so it's very vital to the economic future of this region. So it's very good to know that we had a good session with the Board of Light and Power. Also, a report from the governor's office. The governor has strongly supported trying to help save this plant, so I think it's very important that we do what we can to get on board as well.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Schneider?
Well, you know, I definitely agree with the recommendation in the motion, and I do hope that Commissioner Neme, in this role, does take into account some of our citizens' concerns, although I can, I share many of the same concerns with the citizen who got up and spoke about the long-term effects of the Presque Isle Power Plant. Well, burning coal in general, but I think the Presque Isle Power Plant does have concerns on those levels, although my opinions may not be expressed as abrasively. So I do hope you take into account some of those concerns when you go forward on behalf of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Anyone else at this time? Seeing none. There's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to appoint one member of the city commission to serve on a joint city commission slash Market Board of Light and Power Working Group, which is Commissioner Neme. Do you accept the nomination, Commissioner Neme?
Yes, Your Honor.
With that, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to public comment. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person. If you already gave your physical address and your name, you do not have to do it the second time. Anybody wishing to address the city commission at this time?
Karen Kimar Johnson, 1700 West Avenue, Marquette. And I also serve as a board member of the Market Board of Light and Power. And I'd like to thank you for your support this evening. The rate increase, as tough as it is, is very much needed. And I'd like to encourage the Board of Light and Power residents, both residential and commercial, to contact our office. We have an energy optimization program. Staff is there to assist you with reducing your energy consumption, your electrical usage. And unfortunately, we haven't had a real interest in that program, and I think that's due in large part to the fact that our rates are so attractive. So again, I'm just taking this opportunity to remind all of the Board of Light and Power customers that that program is available. Call the Board of Light and Power. And if you don't remember energy optimization, just let them know that you want to talk to someone regarding reducing your energy bill. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Again, good evening. I'm proud to be a citizen of Marquette. Cooler had prevailed on two very difficult scenarios this evening. Tough decisions in both cases, but the citizens of our community are going to benefit with those positive decisions for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
These are my opinions. October 15th, the commission adopted an incomplete list of priorities. The first item is a 50-year plan. It seems odd because looking ahead 50 years in this changing world is largely a waste of time. All your priorities are viable. However, too much emphasis is placed on economics and growth rather than on protecting the rare beauty that we're blessed with. There's no mention of slopes ordinances or of restrooms at McCarty's Cove. Perhaps restrooms are included under the waterfront plan, which to date has allocated the majority of its resources where no problems existed. In 20 years here, I've rarely seen any misbehavior on the beach, aside from the trampling of dune grass, in many cases by the person who's assigned to protect the beach. That big dune cop made a spectacle out of himself all summer. He has no business there unless he's called in by a lifeguard. His unnecessary presence tarnishes the relaxing atmosphere, yet you people care less because you don't frequent the beach. Lake Superior Watershed is commended for restoring the McCarty's Cove dune. Sadly, damage is already evident on the very grasses that the volunteers planted over the non-designated trails. Careless beach users disregard the signs because the area lacks adequate barriers to protect their excellent work. Additional work is needed to prevent passage on many other tertiary trails along the beach that in several cases are only feet across, apart. Laying dead vegetative matter over them is one inexpensive option until dune grass can be planted. There's an element of sadness as Mr. DePietro's term winds down. He's hard to criticize despite that he largely ignored my comments for six years. He forgot to move items up on the agenda, and refused to tell Mr. Stonehouse to listen up while he wrote during half of my September 30th comment. Even so, we'll miss the circus atmosphere. More disturbing is the lack of available stock to replace the mayoral seat. Still fresh is Mr. Neme's September 12, 2011 interruption of my comment, supported by Mr.s Ryan and Stonehouse. They nearly violated the Open Meetings Act and the oath that they each swore to uphold. That wasn't till the attorney gave them fair warning. Those who favor their personal agendas ahead of the fundamentals of democracy must not run our city. Mr. Coyne never manned up for threatening me harm in the men's room. Such lack of control cannot be tolerated on any commission. Maybe the times come for a female appointment to hopefully end this testosterone-driven regime, in fact, the mentality which led to the recall. By all means, keep Mr.s Ryan and Coyne out of that seat to prevent the demise of the natural spaces that define our sense of place. Or let Mr. Ryan announce which few places he had in mind on July 29th that are better than Marquette, and I'll move there. He refused to tell us on August 12th when asked. This suggests that he enjoys my presence here after all. I mean, we'll have to sit down over coffee if he likes me this much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the city commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll turn this over to my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Kembansi?
Thank you. I just, I want to end this on a positive note and personally thank the BLP for being here tonight and certainly for working with us. These are very tough issues. And I do feel that the relationship between the city commission and the BLP has turned from an almost nonexistent one to one that is in very good standing right now. So I'd like to thank them for the work they do, but mostly for understanding where my concerns are as a community as a whole, even though we don't agree on the rate increases and how they happen. I'd like to thank those workers and also those board members who have certainly shown me thanks for the concerns I have. I would also like to thank Commissioner Schneider. In many ways, you've been my biggest cheerleader coming on, and you've represented a demographic on the commission that if not replaced, will be surely missed. Same to our mayor, Johnny DePietro. You really are the eyes and ears of our community, and I don't expect you to go away. So whatever you do in the two years in between, if you run again, I do hope you're still connected to us. Certainly thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider.
I guess I didn't really think that, it didn't hit me that this was my actual last meeting where I get to partake in dialogue and really deal with issues until the thank yous that have come up this evening. I will save any statements about that actually for next week, or the next meeting when the new commissioners come in, because I'd like to be able to address them. I will say that I'm glad that my last meeting was definitely not dull. There was things to discuss and sink our teeth into, which I always really appreciate that with the majority of the commissioners. I want to touch on the Board of Light and Power vote. For everything that I said, I think everybody was expecting me to vote no, and I think I was too, until the mayor had brought up the future of where we're going with electricity. And I really pray that it's not natural gas because the prices of that are far more volatile than the prices of coal. But his statement reminded me something that John Reynolds had said at our last meeting, which is, "Prices are going up, and if we have such artificially low rates, we're never going to encourage people to do anything for efficiency." And those comments just kind of rang true in my head at the last minute before the vote, and that's what caused me to vote yes. I'm still frustrated with a lot of the things that I brought up. I think that we've made some really positive steps forward as far as a dialogue between two entities, and I'm looking forward to that continuing, even though I won't be on the commission. But really, the reason that I voted yes is people have to understand that our electricity or our power rates in general are going up. We've had 60, 70 years of very cheap resources, and those are only going... We've had 60, 70 years of very cheap resources, and those are only going to go up. I wish that we were paying $12 a gallon for gas right now, which is what most of the world is paying. I know that would be extremely painful, and I'm hearing Commissioner Snicker to my right, but that's really the only way we're ever going to actually become efficient and build effectively for the world that we live in, because right now, we're subsidizing that through taxes. And cheap power, whether it's for automobiles or whether it's for our lights to be on, unless we're paying the true costs of that, we don't make any wise choices about where we're going. So yes, I am frustrated with, with how we got to where we're at, but I'm hoping that, that as our rates do increase, we start thinking about, about the future. Little comment about a resident's concern about bikes. Bikes should never be on the sidewalks, so they shouldn't be hitting curbs. Bikes should act as vehicles and go down the streets, but I definitely think that's a PR issue on, on the city's side to make sure that people know where they're supposed to bike. There's a number of bicycles that I've come really close to taking out or being taken out by when walking out of a front door of a business on Third Street or on, on Washington Street. So I do, I do hope that's something that we can work on in the future. And a great success that, that the city has experienced now for a second year in a row is the Halloween spectacle. Hundreds of people showed up this last weekend on Saturday through the rain, through the freezing sleet, to see some really amazing volunteer performers. I appreciate the city staff for putting time and energy into, into supporting the artists in our community to do something that isn't what we would consider normal traditional art or normal traditional culture, but really bringing people from a diverse group, diverse groups from around the community together to put on something spontaneous and a lot of fun. So thank you for everybody who participated in that and the city for supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we've had a really good meeting tonight. There's been a number of issues that we dealt with, and, and I guess I was kind of caught off guard that we were going to do our farewells tonight. Usually, that's the, the next meeting when we'll have plenty of time. Commissioner Schneider will have lots of time because it's always a light agenda. But I, I, you know, I'm certainly going to miss your, your, your contribution on the Commission. And I understand why you're not going for a second term, and, and I'm confident that both you and Johnny will be around to, to help the community again in, in some form or another, or perhaps as a service on the Commission in later years. But I thank you for your service. I've certainly enjoyed serving with you, and, and I understand that you, you do have to move on at this point, so. And Johnny, I, you know, I guess I can't say enough about you. It's been enjoyable. I've, I've never heard you say a bad word about anyone, and if you did, you did it with a smile, and so I didn't notice it was a bad word. But I appreciate your service, and, and I recall when, when you were running for this, this last term, I had looked at the number of years you were serving. I was thinking, gee, you know, you're, you're going to be off soon, and I'd forgotten that. You started with a two-year term, so you, you had a longer tenure than, than most. And certainly, I was, I was pleased at that because I've enjoyed immensely serving with you on, on the Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme, Commissioner Stonehouse.
Jason, I genuinely regret missing the Halloween festival this year. It was unavoidable, and it was, I won't do it next year, I promise, because it's just, I've heard so many good things about it that I just really have to see it for myself. I would like to thank the BLP Board for being here and their folks. It's been a slog. It's been a difficult process, but I think all of us have learned from it. And more importantly perhaps than anybody, I think our citizens have learned from it with the vast amount of information that's been put out there, the arguments why the rate increase was needed, where the BLP is going, a peek to the future. I think the cooperation that we've been able to, to build on between the, the City Commission and the BLP Board has just been incredible, and I certainly have every reason to believe we'll continue to build on that because it is our future. And the more cooperative we can be, certainly the better for all of us. And that means ultimately the better for, for the city and for our citizens. I, I think a very good decision tonight taken on, on holding the, or postponing the truck route, truck route ordinance. I think that was a critical thing to do. And I truly hope that, you know, from that, we'll be able to build on it and see continued progress, and eventually, the, the situation just resolve itself. It's, it's a critical issue for the city, and I cannot say that in, in any stronger language. And I certainly invite, and it, it also remains certainly an opportunity, I think, for our neighbors to join in with us in trying to solve that, not only on an issue as, as micro as the city, but certainly as macro as the entire region. It is critical for all of us. I have nothing further, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to remind everybody that the election is one week from tomorrow, so it's not that far away. And there are only two commission seats and one Board of Light and Power seat on the ballot, so there aren't a lot of things to bring people out to the polls, but those are pretty important decisions, so I hope people won't forget. So that's, one week from tomorrow is Election Day. I too would like to, since this is the night we're doing it, I guess, extend my best to, to Jason and to Mayor DePietro. Sometimes we've agreed in the past, sometimes we haven't, but that's not what, what it's all about. It's, I, I can build on what Commissioner Coyne said earlier. It's a lot of work, and it's, more than that, it's a lot of frustration, it's a lot of other things that, sometimes I wonder if I'll make it for six years, but I'm going to do my best. But anyway, I certainly want to congratulate both of them for the time they've sat at this table and contributed to a lot of decisions. And, and to the mayor, the mayor has been very fair in the way he has conducted the meetings, and I think that's, that's really important. He's made a sincere effort to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to say what they have on their mind, and I appreciate that very much. The other thing I would say, and I don't raise it as criticism, but the area mobility presentation earlier, I really think that probably deserved a special meeting. You know, after you get a, a 30-minute presentation, which was very good, you know, and then you look at your agenda and you realize you've got some really hot items coming up, I would have liked to have talked with him for probably a half hour, because I think there are some really good points. So I guess there's no way we can undo that. But I think when we get some of these kinds of issues, I think they deserve more time because nobody ever gets up there and just talks for 10 minutes, you know? They, they go a lot longer, and, and you just, like I say, you, you just get caught up with realizing how much else you have to do, but I think that would have been worthy of a lot more discussion, so. And I don't say that to be critical, it's just, it's just hindsight, and, and maybe at some point, we can talk more about that with, with some of the local people, because I think it is a very important subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, thank you. I have a couple of things. One, I wonder if we could ask Ann Constance to give us six more pins so we could all wear a circle to support Sarah and the people who have diabetes. Maybe we can catch her and do that. She's not here, she left. But the other thing, I also would like to thank the Board of Light and Power for working with us, explaining to us, being patient with us, and appreciate your efforts. It's time for me to say some nice things about Jason and Johnny. I, and I reserve the right to say more nice things at the next meeting, but I want to start with Jason. I met Jason over 10 years ago, probably a long time ago, when he was truly a young man, even though he propods himself to be young. Now, he's getting in the tooth, long in the tooth, but Jason, one of the reasons I ran was this was, I felt this was really, really good commission, and I wanted, I, I've been on other commissions that haven't been so good, and it wasn't fun, and my expectations were met. This was a great commission, you worked hard. And particularly, I wanted to say some things to Jason, the thing on smart growth, that's got you written all over it. As, as he was presenting that, I thought, Jason said that, Jason said, he told me that, and he told me that. So I really appreciate your different way of looking at things. You challenged my thought process, which I think is very helpful, helpful, and I, your ideas are refreshing, and I would hope that you would encourage, you would, by your performance and your thought, you would encourage people of your generation to run and to have an impact, which I think you have. And I would hope that someday, you would come back and run again, because as you've expressed, and as John has expressed, which is a little bit on the weird side, that I'm kind of sorry this is over because with all the issues we're facing, a normal person would say, boy, am I glad I'm getting out of here before we have to deal this, 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 and this. And your attitudes have been, wonder, I'm, I'm sorry I'm leaving because I really care and I really want to deal with this. So that's a real compliment to both of you. So I'll, I have some other things to say about you, but that'll be next meeting. And Mayor Johnny, I, I want to just start off with, you and I ran for City Commission eight years ago, and there were 17 people running, and I have nev, at that time, I had never heard of Johnny DePietro. So I was sitting there with 17 people, and Johnny started talking, and I have to be honest, I thought, well, there's no question, he's going to get elected. He is just a regular person and a genuine person, and has a person who truly loves this city very much. And he's proven that by eight years of service. He's a very dedicated, honest, genuine human, human being, and I've really been proud to serve with you, Johnny. I have been the mayor in the past, and I know how difficult it is in having done it, and how difficult, just look at your paper here. You've got eight things going all at once, and it's very, very, it's a very hard job. And you've done a very wonderful job, and you're a great person. And the, and to, two comments I'm going to miss, he does this every, at the end of every meeting, and he knows I don't drink, and he always says, "Let's go out for a 40-ouncer." That's at 11 o'clock at night, and I would probably die if I did that. So I'm going, I'm not sure I'm going to miss that, Johnny. But the other thing Emily said that she's going to miss, because every conversation that he has with me on the phone says, "Give Emily a hug and kiss." Emily's going to miss that. So you can feel free to call me and just say that. Johnny, you have done a great job, and I have had nothing, every people, every person that I run to, they say, they always say, "What do you think of Johnny DePietro?" And I always tell them what I really think, what a fine person you are, and that just opens the gate of their love for you. So, thanks, John.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne. And with that, I'd like to congratulate the fallen city employees on their service anniversary within our department on November 11th. Sergeant Brian Phillips of the Market Fire Department will have 15 years of service. And on November 12th, Police Officer John Inch will have 15 years of service. So we congratulate these two city employees on their anniversaries within our department. Also, I'd like to thank Northern Michigan University's Volunteer Center for organizing the 2013 Make a Difference Day in the city of Marquette and outlying areas of Marquette County. This great event was held this past weekend, and with cold winds and heavy rains, these students and civic organizations all pitched in to help rake residents' yards and perform other duties such as cleaning windows, putting summer outdoor furniture back in sheds and other chores requested of them. These volunteers visited over 246 sites to help prepare, prepare for the fall leaf pickup and the upcoming winter weather. NMU Coordinator Seth Kratz, Assistant Coordinator Sarah Pingel, and Carrie Granshawer made many phone calls and emails to residents to schedule time for the residents or the crews to arrive. Also working in the North Marquette area were NMU student volunteers from the Inferno House, also known on campus as NMU's Major's Hall. Volunteer crew leader was Dylan Westenborn, and then he was in charge of all. The girls on this team of Abby Armstrong, Sam, Sammy Lennon, Nuski, Taylor Pfeiffer, and Sarah Wallace. Again, thank you to all the Make a Difference volunteers from NMU and all of the civic organizations who helped all of the residents with their work. And I'd like to also remind motorists that Thursday, October 21st, is trick and treaters, and they'll be out on the street, the young kids and that, going from house to house and crossing the streets, so kind of be careful as you're driving through the city streets as young Halloween treaters won't be looking for motorists driving through the area. And so anyways, just keep that caution, that in mind when driving through it, it'll be dark. Also, of interest for the residents will be the compo site will be closed. The drop-off site will be, that's located at the Clifton Flexer Boulevard, will close on Saturday, November the 9th. And also the same day, the Household Rubbish Site will close at the end of the day, and that's also at the Clifton site. So many people are going to be digging into their garages and attics to get rid of the stuff before the site closes on November 9th. So anyways, keep that in mind. One of the reasons why I mentioned to Commissioner Schneider that I wanted to acknowledge this as our last meeting is because when, at, during election for the mayor, Mayor Pro Tam, and then the two new commissioners, they, they don't want to, you know, they're excited about getting elected to their posts as mayor, Mayor Pro Tam, and then the new commissioner, so they don't want to sit here and, and listen to Commissioner Schneider and I am. And they want to hit the ground running and, and get the first meeting over with, so then they can go out to the public and start promising them things that they can, that they can keep. But anyways, but I had so many great commissioners in the past in, in this present crew. They're just awesome. And our city manager and all of his staff, department heads, you know, I mean, they all worked, the city manager had pulled them all in to work closely with the city commissioners, and we got our new Assistant City Manager Kyle over there. He's all excited, he can't wait for our city manager to go on vacation so he can sit up here at the helm. Thank you, Kyle. But anyways, it's awesome. You know, it's, it's been a great eight years, and we got a lot of stuff done. And one of the things I really enjoyed working all these years was the animosity had drifted away from the city commissioners, where they started working more and more with each other. And then I started hearing that from the residents and from communities outside the city, saying how, you know, the commission and that had been working good. And a lot of people were tired of that animosity and vicarion and, and not getting much done. So anyways, we came a long ways, and, and I'm very, I'm, I'm positive that these commissioners will really stay on course and with our master plan, you know, for the city. And, and I mean, we, we attend a lot of meetings, not, not just commission meetings. We get invited into the township to address issues, and we get invited by many other organizations to meet with them face-to-face and things like that. So I really, like I say, I had really enjoyed it, and, and sorry that the time went by so fast, but, you know, time goes by fast, eh, Pete Larue? Pete's older than I am, but I grew up with Pete. He was from South Marquette, I was from North Marquette, and he would go out with somebody, one of the girls from North Marquette, I'd go out south and steal one of his, but that's besides his point. We'll talk about that some other time. Yeah. With that, before I get carried away, I want to switch this over to the city manager. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Not entirely sure how to follow up, but I'd only point out too, I'm a little unprepared for tonight, being- for tonight, being our laudatory comments. I've had the opportunity to work around government at different levels for about 30 years, and one of the most bittersweet moments is always the majesty of the process, and that transition where people who've, who've been strong contributors and who've been strong leaders and who've worked through a lot of very difficult issues, say goodbye to make room for the people who are coming on board behind them, and that's a necessary and important part of our government. And so it's something you, you become accustomed to, but you never are quite ready for it to happen. And I know I speak for all of staff when I think, every time I thank the commission for their leadership, we're struggling with very hard issues, but in this particular case for Commissioner Schneider, for Mayor De Pietro, we're going to miss you, like we miss all the others who've come before you, but we miss you as human beings as well, and we wish you only success as you move into the future. It's been an interesting time, I guess, for me, coming back home these last three years when you think of all the things that we're going through. It's important to remember that most of the things that people are struggling with, when you look at these, when you look at the dialogue at the table, aren't because there's somehow some lack of collegiality or necessarily any, any adversity between members. When you look at even the big issues that we're struggling with tonight, they're all really kind of what happens as a result of a lot of other things going on in different parts of the country, you know? Whether it's an EPA decision to close a road, or whether it's an EPA decision to close down coal-fired power, whether it's a healthcare decision to change the way medical services are delivered in the country, or the need to be competitive and take advantage of all the best things about our community as we move forward. And there's probably as many views as voters on all of those different issues, but there ultimately gets to be only seven people and one mayor who get to manage our time and our, direct our efforts in how we solve that problem. And that's a huge responsibility that you can't ever be adequately compensated for, but it's a virtue in public service, and just like to pass along my thanks from staff, from all the folks who don't get paid every day to serve our community like you do in your spare time. So with that, Your Honor, I really don't have anything further to add, other than we wish you all the best, you and Commissioner Schneider, and anything you pursue in the future.
And I thank you very much, and with that, we're adjourned.